We call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2024-13 for June 18, 2024. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained motion from council to approve the consent agenda?
To move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, consent agenda passes. At this time, we now have three proclamations that we want to read. They're proclamations to recognize individuals for participating in the election page program to the presidential primary election. Councilman Josh Hastings is going to present that. We'll have all three come up, Nathan Brandt, Barry Flint, and Ernie Saint-Si. Is that how it is? But if you come up, all three, you can come up at the same time. I said Ernie was Erneite Saint-Si. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Today, we have a proclamation or put together for to recognize a certificate of appreciation to both Erneite Barry and Brandon, Nathan. For this is for participating in election page program for the Wycomico County Board of Elections. The Election Day Page Program was developed to encourage student involvement and understanding of the democratic process while offering an opportunity for students to earn service learning hours towards graduation. This program allows pages to provide assistance to election judges and voters with certain aspects of the voting process in the polling locations on Election Day in accordance with election law. And so, we do really appreciate all this. This program appreciates your involvement in this. We have these certificates for you all. This is done this 18th day of June 2024, signed by the entire county council. Important in that democratic process is the ability to have a voice. So, would you like to say anything?
You can do. Sure you can.
No, well, in that case, we thank you all very much for this. And let me pass these over here. Barry? There you go. Look at that drop here. Mind if we take a picture? You guys can stand right over here. Come right up front.
You can come up here if you wanted to get closer.
Good morning.
Ma'am, if you want to get closer, come on up.
I'm the election director. My name is Deion Church. And I just wanted to say that these students that have really awesome job this year, this is our inaugural program. So, it's the first time it's ever been done in Wycomico County. And it's being done across the state. And they are 14, 15-year-old students. And we do thank God for everyone that has participated. We had 10 to sign up, and we ended up with three participating. And we're looking for more to come and help us in the fall. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
By the way, do we have anyone else in the audience who has participated in the election? Okay.
You can stay up there if you'd like. Stay up there. Yeah, there you go. Yes. Morning, Ms. Hurley. How are you?
Good morning, Council President and Council Members, ladies and gentlemen. There are six public hearings on the agenda this morning pertaining to land preservation easements. A public hearing notice was posted in the local newspaper for each one of the public hearings stating that a public hearing would be held at 10:00 a.m. Land preservation easements are a way to preserve farmland for future food and fiber production as they restrict development on prime farmland and woodland. Once the easement is in place, property owners may still use the property for agricultural or related uses, but for the most part, they are giving up the development rights on the property. The first one is Resolution Number 64-2024. This is recommending the approval for the sale of a land preservation easement from Donald Shockley for property located on Race Bridge Road, Parsonsburg, Maryland, consisting of 225 acres. And we have Kaylee Justice here with the Wycomico County Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
I'm sorry, planning and zoning.
Yes. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 64-2024. Anybody that would like to make a comment in reference to this specific resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concern. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 64-2024. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 64-2024. To move. Second. Any discussion?
I just have one question. It's got nothing to do with this person's property. It's just more or less a question on the land preservation easement. So, my question is, is if somebody wanted to remove that in the future, how do they, like, is there, can you remove it? Or is this?
They have to pay them back, pay the state back.
They have to pay the state back?
Reimbursement, yes.
Okay. That's, that's all. That's all.
Any other questions? Yes.
I can just add on to this. First of all, I do this work for my day job in supporting land conservation. And of course, what we're doing today is that over 900 acres of Wycomico farmland to make sure that our farmers who want to preserve their land, who want to be farmers, who want their grandchildren to be farmers, that they get the ability to do that. And they're not, you know, that that land stays that way. There are ways for to remove an easement, but as a whole, most of these easements are usually for life. So, from now till the end of time, hopefully, we'll be have the ability to make sure that we're getting local foods. And so, pretty good thing in general, and especially for the farmers. There's been a long, and just so to note it, there's been a really long list for a long time. Some of the farmers here in our county have been waiting close to 20 years to preserve their land. So, it's a pretty big deal. There was a big, there's a lot of money that came in after the, all the sale of, you know, a lot of property sales after COVID. So, that's why there's a surge much more than normal. But really good thing in general.
Thanks. Yes, James.
Will this, will this prevent, like, if a solar company wanted to come in and, like, build a solar farm on a preserved land, will they be able to do that? Or do they have to buy it back?
No, they, if they wanted to, any farm that, you know, any farm especially, this is ag land preservation, it's a mouth easement. So, if someone wanted to put in a chicken house or multiple chicken houses or things like that, they could do it as long as it sticks with the use of agriculture. In this case, solar energy is usually a, as a whole, that is deemed to be a commercial activity. And now, there are agrivoltaics, which is basically the ability to have solar as a primary. And then secondary would be things like, you know, grazing or beekeeping or other kind of things that are ancillary. But the primary activity has to be agriculture.
Okay. I'm done. Thank you.
Questions? All those in favor of Resolution 65-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 66-2024. This is recommending the approval for the sale of a land preservation easement from G&amp;J Homes LLC for property located on Rounds Road in Parsonsburg, Maryland, consisting of approximately 59.66 acres.
Time we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 66-2024. If you have any comments in regard to this resolution, come to the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. Concludes the public hearing on Resolution 66-2024. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 66-2024. To move. Second. Any discussion?
All those in favor say aye. Post.
Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 68-2024. Recommending the approval for the sale of a land preservation easement from Charles Wright IV, L. Michelle Wright, and Charles Wright V for property located on Ocean Gateway in Hebron, Maryland, consisting of approximately 88.5 acres.
It's time we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 68-2024. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 67-2024. To move. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Okay, next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 69-2024. Recommending the approval for the sale of a land preservation easement from Riley Group MD General Partnership for property located on Bob Smith Road in Parsonsburg, Maryland, consisting of approximately 294.83 acres.
It's time we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 69-2024. If you have any comments, please come to the podium, state your name, your county residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 69-2024. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 69-2024. To move. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 68-2024. Recommending the approval for the sale of a land preservation easement from Charles Wright IV, L. Michelle Wright, and Charles Wright V for property located on Ocean Gateway in Hebron, Maryland, consisting of approximately 88.5 acres.
It's time we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 68-2024. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county residence, and your concerns. Concludes the public hearing on Resolution 68-2024. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 68-2024. To move. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 68-2024. Recommending the approval for the sale of a land preservation easement from Riley Group MD General Partnership for property located on Bob Smith Road in Parsonsburg, Maryland, consisting of approximately 294.83 acres.
It's time we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 68-2024. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county residence, and your concerns. Concludes the public hearing on Resolution 68-2024. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 68-2024. To move. Second. Any discussion?
I just did want to amend or make sure it said, you know, I think when it comes to our best ability for Wycomico County to be, to have the best platform and ability to be successful going forward, I think it's really important that our, you know, that our county executive position, by the way, which is, I think many people might think that our county executive position is a ceremonial position like a mayor is in some towns. Of course, that's certainly not the case. This is a, you know, this is a position that is a $200 million organization with hundreds of employees. And I do think that as a whole, it, you know, I think we need to set up the right parameters to make sure that that position is as successful as possible. It's hard to transition from, you know, from an individual's regular job to then becoming the head of a many hundred million dollar organization. So, I do want to, I do think it's important for us to continue outside of this, but in congruence with this, I guess. It would be nice for us, I think, to have, whether that be, we do switch to a county manager, if we do have, say, a director of administration or a position like that. Or if we, the county chooses to stay with a county executive, I think we need to make sure that we tighten the parameters of which someone could qualify to become, to lead the county. In this case, you know, if you wanted to, I've brought this up many times before, if you, if you wanted to be a state's attorney, you know, or if you want to be in those positions, it requires a law degree. Mr. Renton, our attorney, can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, I think as a whole, we do, the Wycomico County Council, we do have the ability to just to put further clarity as to who could qualify to be in those positions. And if so, it might be best to be start, to have a starting point of having someone who either has served, you know, one or two terms on the county council, who has, say, five years' experience as a leading, you know, as an executive for a local government, or who has a master's degree in public administration, public policy, or a law degree. You know, we could put a set of parameters in place to make sure that whomever is choosing to put their name forward, that they're the most qualified person. And then, when it comes time for an election, we get the ability to choose from the most qualified, not just who's available, of course. I think our current restrictions, maybe it's just that you have to be a qualified voter. I'm not sure. Maybe it's an age requirement. I forget. But I think if we could continue to further make sure that if we stick with a county executive position, that that position be as qualified as humanly possible. Or if we switch over to, to go back to what we used to be, that whomever then the council chooses also has some of these parameters in place to make sure that we're successful. So, I just want to throw that out into the debate. Now, whether that's a separate resolution or something that has to go on the ballot, I'm not really sure. But I do think it's worth us trying to consider not just option one, to put something on the ballot, but then option two, to make sure that we are, continue to be, have the most qualified and experienced and ready individual in that position. Because this is not a ceremonial position. This is a, this is a key position of which, you know, it, there's a, there's a learning curve. I don't care if you're going to work at McDonald's or if you're going to go work at, you know, any, any other job, you've got a learning curve. This is one where the learning curve is pretty darn steep. And so, I'll yield back, Mr. President, but I do think that that might be a better way for us to continue to be thoughtful about how to be successful going forward. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have some comments, yes. No doubt that the council, some council members have received a lot of criticism for putting this on the table for us to vote on today. And at our last meeting, our public hearing, a lot of people threw a lot of numbers out. I've got a number that I want to use, and it's called, it's 139 years. So, from 1867, which is on that seal up there, until 2006, Wycomico County worked under the council or commissioner form of government. Now, it'd be interesting, I've got a list home of every council member from the beginning of time in Wycomico County. It'd be interesting if we could talk to those folks, but they're long, long gone. But I'm sure there were some bumps in the road in that time, but we never saw the deceitfulness, the hatefulness, the splitting of government, the name-calling, the things that we've seen since we've had an executive form of government. It's, you know, the turmoil has been unbelievable. I've been following county government probably since the middle 80s, and I've talked to prior council members that are still with us. You know, they said, yep, we didn't always get along, but, you know, on a matter, but the next matter, we could get along and we could move forward on. At the last meeting, I said I had a list of things that I wanted to point out that I have experienced since I've been on the council. Things that have happened with the county executive's office since 2006. I'm going to share some of those. I've got a rather long list, and I've been, as Mrs. Hurley says, we don't want to be here all day. So, I'm going to read a few of them. And then, maybe people will understand a little more about where the thinking process is coming from, from some of our council members, of why we need to explore, of going back to the, the way our government was before. Number one that I had written down was condoning drinking alcohol by county employee while driving a county vehicle. Number two I had written down was hiring employees and paying them from other departments of which they weren't working. You know, that, that's, that's what we've got when we don't follow the charter. Hiring employees and offering benefit packages not in accordance with the personnel manual. Giving a discount to a construction company for tipping fees without legal authority. And then, worse than that, failing to try to go back and recover those fees. Remove recycling stations without public input or council knowledge. You know, the council started getting all kinds of calls and complaints. You know, there was no, no warning to the citizens that that was going to happen. Supported downzoning of farmland, which would have decreased owner's property values. And failure to enforce zoning laws when it involved relatives. That's another one. Sold county-owned property to a friend at far less than market value. That one really stands out because that's one that really shows how powerful the county executive's office can be, to be able to step forward and do something like that. We'll talk about this in a few minutes, I guess, but failure to inform municipalities and businesses of an increase in tipping fees. Hire the lobbyist without the council's knowledge. You know, that was a surprise to all of us, and that was sprung on us one day. In fact, it wasn't, it was sprung on us by the lobbyist. He stood up at a meeting and said, hey, I'm your new lobbyist. And anyway, there's a lot more. I'm not going to go through all of them, but that's what we, some of the concerns that I have. And that's why I'm going to support putting this on the referendum so the citizens of Wycomico County can make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments?
Jeff, help me. Yeah, I don't want to go over what Joe said and be repetitive. I think, I think the question is, has this worked the way it was intended over the past 18 years? You know, we keep hearing about checks and balances. Couple of examples that Joe stated, the recycling station, Safari at the quarry, closing a Wallston Switch Road. Apparently, the council didn't have any input on those decisions. And again, 40% of the current voters did not vote for the executive form of government for one reason or another. They either didn't live here, they weren't old enough, or they didn't support it 18 years ago. So, it's almost half the voters in this county, I think they deserve another chance to voice their opinion. That's all I got.
I, I personally support the executive form of government. I think it's nice to be able to elect someone that can run the county. And if, if it's not working out, we just find a new executive. I've, I've not seen a petition for this, signatures or anything. I've gotten the public comments from, from at the podium here for and against. And some of my concerns, I guess, with the council man act commissioner form of government is, you know, we put a lot of hours in right now. We're going to, the council is going to be, it's going to have to work a lot more to be able to do the job of an executive. And I guess, I just, you know, I just, I just wish we could just have a different resolution here. Now, I've heard a lot of people tell me that they would like to see term limits on the ballot. I know that not everyone is a fan of that, and I understand that. But I have not heard the amount of people come to me personally and say, we want to remove this executive form of government. Maybe other people on the council are hearing completely different things than me, but it is what it is. And this will more than likely go back to the people for the, for the vote, for the ballot in November. And whatever that decision is, is what we're going to have to work with. So, it's, it'll be up to you guys.
Thank you, James.
Thanks.
Josh?
Just last thing to say, of course, I, I don't have strong feelings on this topic in general. I did vote for it, you know, nearly 20 years ago to have the county executive. In general, I'm a, I'm a systems-oriented individual. You put the right systems in place, you get the right results. If you don't get the right results, you fix the system until you do get the right results. That's kind of my general mindset. I don't really care for the, the look of us to be the, I don't think a single county in Maryland has ever moved back. And I don't know what that means for us or how that makes us look. But then again, I'll note that there are counties like Charles, maybe it's not Charles County, one of the other counties in southern Maryland has a population of about 30,000 more than us, and they don't have the county executive. But overall, I think we just need to put the right systems in place to get the right results. I think a county executive is a, generally a good thing for help to be, to have checks and balances. But I think we need to continue to further clarify what makes a successful position. And not to say, by the way, if we don't get rid of the county executive, that we couldn't end up having a new county administrator appointed by the council who could be a very hard partisan individual who may not, you know, who may bring, bring some of the same challenges that we've had in the past to the, to the county all over again. So, overall, I think let's just try to fix systems, put the right checks and balances in place, and I think you'll get the right results. But once again, I don't have strong feelings.
Sure.
I voted for the executives and the council 18 years ago. And I made the statement, if it didn't work, we can always change. I've talked to all three of the county executives that we've had and the one that was appointed. I didn't think it worked. I saw conflicts with a couple of them. But I tried to be respectful to people in general. I think when we do things and become defensive of our positions, that causes a lot of problems. Communication is very important. Whatever way this goes, I do support putting it on the ballot. And I concur with, with Josh. We have to make sure people are qualified. We have to make sure people are willing to accept criticism without being offended. People criticize me. I mean, I was, we were trash when we were in, I was on the city council. But I didn't take it to heart. That's part of people's right to criticize. You just make it, make yourself better, or just go up to the person and explain why don't you like what I'd said, or just talk to the person face to face, not get angry with the person because they disagree with you. Don't become vengeful. Don't become retaliating against people because that's promoting hate.
We're going to, the council is going to be, it's going to have to work a lot more to be able to do the job of an executive. And I guess, I just, you know, I just wish we could just have a different resolution here. Now, I've heard a lot of people tell me that they would like to see term limits on the ballot. I know that not everyone is a fan of that, and I understand that. But I have not heard the amount of people come to me personally and say, we want to remove this executive form of government. Maybe other people on the council are hearing completely different things than me, but it is what it is, and this will more than likely go back to the people for the vote, for the ballot in November. And whatever that decision is, is what we're going to have to work with. So, it's, it'll be up to you guys.
Thank you, James.
Thanks.
Josh?
Just last thing to say, of course, I don't have strong feelings on this topic in general. I did vote for it, you know, nearly 20 years ago, to have the county executive. In general, I'm a systems-oriented individual. You put the right systems in place, you get the right results. If you don't get the right results, you fix the system until you do get the right results. That's kind of my general mindset. I don't really care for the look of us to be the, I don't think a single county in Maryland has ever moved back. And I don't know what that means for us or how that makes us look. But then again, I'll note that there are counties like Charles, maybe it's not Charles County, one of the other counties in southern Maryland has a population of about 30,000 more than us, and they don't have the county executive. But overall, I think we just need to put the right systems in place to get the right results. I think a county executive is a, generally a good thing for help to be, to have checks and balances, but I think we need to continue to further clarify what makes a successful position. And not to say, by the way, if we don't get rid of the county executive, that we couldn't end up having a new county administrator appointed by the council who could be a very hard partisan individual who may not, you know, who may bring some of the same challenges that we've had in the past to the county all over again. So, overall, I think let's just try to fix systems, put the right checks and balances in place, and I think you'd get the right results. But once again, I don't have strong feelings.
Shane?
I voted for the executives and the council 18 years ago, and I made the statement, if it didn't work, we can always change. I've talked to all three of the county executives that we've had, and the one that was appointed. I didn't think it worked. I saw conflicts with a couple of them. But I tried to be respectful to people in general. I think when we do things and become defensive of our positions, that causes a lot of problems. Communication is very important. Whatever way this goes, I do support putting it on the ballot. And I concur with Josh. We have to make sure people are qualified. We have to make sure people are willing to accept criticism without being offended. People criticize me. I mean, I was, we were trash when we were, I was on the city council. But I didn't take it to heart. That's part of people's right to criticize. You just make it, make yourself better, or just go up to the person and explain why don't you like what I'd said, or just talk to the person face to face, not get angry with the person because they disagree with you. Don't become vengeful. Don't become retaliating against people, because that's promoting hate. I try to get along with everybody. We're not always going to agree. I'm a debater, I was in a debates class in high school. So, I just think, whatever the people decide, we have to live with it. But once we, the vote is put in, we need to find a way that we can get along and find a way that we can make the county government a better place to be. I think that putting fear in people about their jobs, it's unfair to them, it stresses them out. And how can they do a good job for us if they're stressed out, don't know which way they're going? Because this decision is about the change of the government, not because of somebody's job. And for me, it's not somebody's job. But I think that we need to see what the people feel, and then move on. If it's for to keep continuing the county executive, I can live with that. If it's for the county manager, I can live with that. So, it's just let the people make the choice. And I think then we are showing that we have gotten the community involved in this decision. That's all I have to say.
Shane?
I'm not going to repeat a lot of things that have been said already, but in my eyes, this current form of government just isn't working. So, I will support putting it on the ballot, let the people decide. If they're for it, they're for it. If they're not, they're not. I can live with it either way. It's the people's decision. I think the people should have another shot and another look at this, and they will decide what the outcome is.
Any other comments?
Mr. President, can I just, Mr. Hastings' comment about qualifications, it's a charter amendment, so the process that Mr. Hastings is describing is essentially putting, is adopting a resolution, putting it on the ballot for the voters to decide what qualifications they want. It's not a council decision, so I just want to make that clear.
To be clear, that's a council would choose what then goes to the ballot, yes, both. Thank you.
Something I would add is, I've witnessed things, as Joe has stated, I've witnessed both forms of government. I've witnessed personally the executive legislative form of government. And I have found, I think, that, you know, you try to make things work as best you can, but I've found that the executive legislative form of government in Wachemaco County doesn't seem to be an effective, an effective means by which to govern. I've found it's, over the years, it's not as efficient, it's not as cost-effective. I've actually felt that the large majority of time that I personally spend and have spent before and past with prior executives is simply measures that are countermanding with the executive initiatives the executive may have taken, and it's very time-consuming. I think a body of seven is fair, more fair. I think it's more balanced. You have seven individuals with, each with a very good opinion as to how things could be managed. You would hire a county manager, and Josh had suggested, what if the county manager isn't good? Well, the seven members of the council have the authority to replace that manager if they don't think it's efficient enough. As it is right now, the county, and not the council, but the county as a whole, is stuck with what they get for a four-year term. And a four years can be an awful long time. It can be an awful long time to department heads if they feel like they're not being treated fairly. Council can't control that. But if the council were a body of seven, only the council would have complete control over that, which I also think is very, very important. Other suggestion was made, well, how can a seven-member council of part-time individuals, how can they be effective? People need to keep in mind what the history is, and it's a seven-member council that gave you Shorebridge Stadium, gave you the Henry Parker Sports Complex, rebuilt the Civic Center, gave you excellent roads and public safety with either sheriff's department or police department, or fire departments. So, it has been done before, and it's an effective form of government. Now, I think that's why we're sort of at a crossroads where the council feels that it is the, it is the responsibility of the council to afford the public the opportunity to decide for themselves whether they want to continue with the executive form of government as is, or whether they want to have a seven-member council. So, I'll leave it at that. Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 70-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So, we have five in favor and two opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
The next item for business is Resolution Number 71-2024. This is approving a zoning waiver for the Hall Moon Glow Annexation in the city of Fruitland for property located on Moon Glow Road, parcels 191, 195, and 282 on Tax Math 58. And we have Andy Mitchell here, if there are any questions.
Attending motion from council, approve Resolution 71-2024. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Josh?
I just want to get some more clarity on that, if Mr. Mitchell's.
Come on up here. If you can let us know, just state your position and your name and your position for us. Thanks.
Andrew Mitchell, I'm the city attorney for the city of Fruitland.
Good to see you again, by the way.
Yeah, nice to be seeing.
Just more clarity, I guess, I was trying to understand, I see the CVC4 to becoming a highway business zoning, but I just want to give you a little bit more background as to what's happening there, very briefly. I don't anticipate any issues with it, but just kind of curious.
Right, and the county planning and zoning department favored this change also. There was no objection from the state department of planning. They had no density issue. They did see that it was a significant use change, that's why we're here. Except for the fact that it's zoned in the county as, I think it's R15, so it's residential, but it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. So, it hasn't been residential, I don't know for how long, not since I've been back, so 30-plus years. It was Wallace Peterman's operations center until it just fell into disuse entirely. So, it's right on, when you come off of the bypass where Cedar, St. Luke's and Cedar sort of blend together, it's right there. And so, it's determined that the C4 highway business use would be more appropriate. The county, the city planning department was much in favor of that, the city council of Fruitland was, and your own planning department was thought at a good use.
Also say, I do know Mr. Hall, and he's a good man, I appreciate him, I'll see him back.
Yeah, he's here if you have any questions, yes.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Any other?
Thank you. Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution 71-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thanks for your consideration. It's Resolution Number 72-2024. There is a updated 72-2024 on your council table, so that will be what you're voting on today. This is a resolution amending the fiscal year 2025 operating budget to make a supplemental appropriation from prior year fund balance to offset the change of commercial tipping fee rates from $100 a ton to $78 a ton.
Attending motion from council, approve Resolution Number 72-2024. Is the move? Second?
Second.
Discussion. We have Mr. Swaby here?
Yeah. Would you, yeah, would you like to come up and just tell us what's?
For the public record, if you could announce your name and your position, that'd be great.
Paul Wilber, county attorney.
Mike Swaby, deputy public works director.
Julie Jared, I know county executive.
Charles Schmeckel, deputy finance director.
Thank you all for being here.
So, obviously, I think all of us are in agreeance that it was a little bit probably premature. I know that we presented it in the budget, I know that we had a work session with Mr. Swaby, and he explained the need to raise the commercial rates. We then, you all voted on it on June 4th, we didn't get any public comment, but we all know kind of how that goes. Once it was posted, then obviously, I'm assuming, I don't know who all got phone calls, I know I got phone calls about it. So, I met with Public Works yesterday morning, and it seemed like we were both kind of working simultaneously. I know the council had their suggestion, we had our suggestion, and we kind of came together. So, we obviously were okay with the $78, we're looking to make up some lost revenue from this, because we are losing out, we are losing money. And so, we're trying to not only have enough money, you know, to build a new cell, which is going to happen relatively soon, but also there are other costs, you know, with the landfill. So, we spoke and said that $78 would be good, it would be a good transition, and I spoke to surrounding counties. We are still, I think we're right in between, I think Somerset's 75, right? And then Worcester is 80, they are not raising theirs to 85. So, we're right in the middle between those two. Did you want to add anything to that?
Just that, another consideration, which I don't think we compromise by lessening the increase, is slow the influence flow of solid waste. The more appealing we are with our rates, the bigger response we're going to get with people coming in to use our landfill, whether they reside in Wachemaco County or not. If we become an attractive market destination, and that's what I believe is happening by and large, we're going to fill our capacity quicker than expected, and I think we're on the road to doing that now. We have one cell left to design and build in the current landfill footprint, and then we have expansion plans for the next, you know, we have a long-term plan. But I think a $78 rate would be a good transition, you know, with the idea that we consider future rate increases as the time comes to slow that inbound solid waste.
Josh?
Just curious, so if we, we've got one more cell coming in, and then after that, are we going to continue to build at the current landfill site for our landfill?
Last cell, once it's designed and built, will fill our capacity permission under the permit we have at the current footprint. There's some things we can do with the upper altitudes of those cells, but that's negligible. At that point, we'll need to move into the expansion plan.
And so, where else in the county are we going to put a new landfill?
Still at the same site, just across the street.
Okay. There's room for more cells.
Does that get us, how far does that get us into the future? Just, I mean, this all goes into the same conversation, though, of trying to make sure that we're not a dumping ground for Delmarva, and that we're then trying to make sure that we're being thoughtful. Obviously, jumping from, what were we at, 50 to 60, some amount to a very high amount, you know, to $100, that was quite a jump and not easy for businesses and folks to absorb. So, and we've tried, we've mentioned that before on the council, that we have to be cautious there. But I do think, obviously, the long-term balance is that we need to make sure that we've, you know, there's no magical unicorn that's going to come and save us when it comes to the plastics and to the, all the things that are going to go, be stuffed into the ground. We need to have better solutions so that we can limit the amount that's going into the, into the landfill. But, but yeah, I think this generally makes sense. I guess that's, just make sure you all are aware, on the executive side of things, my long-term concerns are that we, when we no longer have a space to put things in Wachemaco County, our taxes are going to skyrocket.
Correct, yeah, and I think that's really going to depend on the plan. So, right now, the plan is to keep Brick Hill in place, and then just expand across the streets, so it would be two locations. There is the thought of closing Brick Hill and using that, and it would be an alternative route into the landfill, but those are all futuristic, you know, ideas, so that's going to look like. Go ahead.
No, no, I'd actually add on, of course, just for comparison, you know, Ocean City, they don't, they send their trash to, what, New Jersey, I think it is? Go figure.
That's the kind of alternative we're left with when we run out of space, so, you know, there's a lot of things in that formula, including what our diversion plans are, and we've been successful with those, and how we affect the market of influence with the pricing. So, it is a piece of it.
And Ocean City might be able to afford that, but the citizens of Wachemaco County not so much. So, we really do have to make sure, I'm glad you all are moving in the direction of continuing to limit what's coming from outside our county into take up our areas, because eventually our taxpayers, all of us that live here, are going to have to front that bill, and there's only so much land in Wachemaco County. Thank you.
Would it not be feasible to take it out of the county somehow, like a rail car? Is that not feasible?
It's just the amount of taxes that it will cost because of the transportation fees of getting it out.
Okay. And then we're at the mercy of, you know, what the available destinations are, the rules that go with that, and, you know, that creates a whole enforcement program, and it'd be very costly. Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, I guess, I have a couple of questions. We did everything by the book, legal, we had our public hearings, we had, you know, people had their opportunities to come in, the budgets were posted. But I guess my question is, why wasn't the end-users, the haulers, the municipalities, notified about this through the county executive's office prior to the budget being struck? I mean, it was just a surprise. I mean, I got calls from one person from a municipality, I was texting with somebody else from a municipality. They, you know, they were blindsided. They've already set their budgets for the year, you know, and if this, I think going to the, I think going to the 78 is going to be impactful on some of our smaller, our smaller municipalities and our, you know, our haulers. You know, we talk about a lot of this, what's going on. In the end, it's the citizens that we're impacting, whether it's through the city, one of the municipalities, or through private haulers or whatever. I guess I don't understand why there wasn't some outreach done. I know there's a lot of things we go through, a lot of things we approved in this county, and most of the time, there's a lot of background work done. It seems like there wasn't a lot of background work done on that side of this problem, this issue.
So, there was a lot of background work done. We looked at various landfills. Mr. Swaby spent a lot of time speaking to other landfills as to what their costs were.
Excuse me, I'm talking about on that side, as far as information going out to the municipalities. Okay.
So, we waited until you approved the budget, so nothing was finalized, so why would we send out something that wasn't finalized? And you had every opportunity, as well as a District 5 representative, to let your municipalities know, hey, this is what was proposed in the budget. So, I think, in all fairness, both sides failed. We both failed.
I'm not saying we failed. I'm saying, why wasn't it done? I'm not saying, I'm saying, why wasn't there outreach done?
Well, why wasn't it done on your part? We could sit here and go back and forth. Why didn't you tell your District 5 rep, like in Pittsville, or Willards, or anything else? You didn't let them know either. So, my thought is, is that both of us kind of failed. I did not, I waited until the budget was finalized on June 14th, and then the information went out. Should it have been done sooner? Potentially. But we all got the phone calls, and this is why this resolution is in front of you, to make it a little bit more manageable in a transition period. So, I think that both of us, the council representatives of the districts, as well as the county executive, both could have done a better job at letting their municipalities know that this cost was coming in, because in all fairness, this was turned in to you all April 16th, and it was in there. So, I think both of us could have done a better job. You represent the county just as much as I do.
Thanks for putting it on my back, Julie. Appreciate that.
It's not putting it on your back, you just did the same thing. So, we can go back and forth, both of us failed, and now it's in front of us right now to make that change and to make it right.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, I'm happy that we're getting to a resolution here. I knew that this was, it took me by surprise on Friday, because I just, I knew we had talked about this a couple of months ago, and I just assumed, shame on me for assuming, but I just assumed that people knew about it. I, my mistake, my mistake, I should have definitely reached out to everyone that I could think of. I will not make that mistake twice, and I, maybe everybody would agree with that, but I'm very happy that we're coming to this resolution. We, nobody wants to put anyone out of business on accident. I mean, that, I mean, not even on purpose. Who wants to do that? But, and I know I see seagulls up here, and we, honestly, we didn't want to hurt your business at all, I, honestly, honest to God. But there is a need for this to go up. We've got to have it go up some, and we're going to inch it up, now that you guys know, we're going to inch it up a little slower. So, and there will be more of a transition from here on out, so.
Charles?
If I may, I just kind of want to break out some of the facts here. When we started this budget process, we came up with an estimate that the break-even point is going to be about $84 a ton. Anything less than that... Anything less than that, we have to dig into fund balance, and that's kind of what this resolution shows. When we dig into fund balance, it's not just the tipping fees that are paying for solid waste. Now you're asking property taxes, income taxes, you're asking the taxpayers to subsidize solid waste. We do have a need to expand solid waste, which is why this is an enterprise fund and why most government, we try not to show a profit in solid waste, we have to, in order so that we can build towards those additional, or to expand in the future. And so that, in a nutshell, is kind of why we're, why we do have to increase these rates from the 64 a ton. So.
That's a very good point, Charles. And I guess in line with that, and either you or Mr. Spaby could help us, some concern is why the 552,000 is now going to be coming from, for the most part, from the year-end balance, coming from the general fund, really. It's coming from the taxpayers to a certain degree.
So right now, solid waste is showing about $6.6 million of fund balance. So that's previous profits that they have. So yes, this year, or yes, we are projecting this upcoming year to be a net loss for solid waste. We still have a bit of margin, but I caution you, let's, we probably don't want to be resting on those laurels. Six and, or 6.6 million is going to go too quickly.
So clarifications, this comes from the county's fund balance or the solid waste fund balance?
Solid waste's fund balance.
That's, that's, that's the clarification. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that. We know there's about a $1.7 million increase in your capital expenses this year, and it's up to you, Mr. Spaby, as to whether, where you take, where you slice that pie, and we really wouldn't want to impede on that. That's your call, not ours, really.
I appreciate that latitude, just to highlight some of those things. We have three fairly large pieces of equipment that we absolutely cannot do without. All three are either at a minimum past their useful life and have been dealing us some serious expense-related repairs to keep them moving. But just in summary, we have the grinder, which is about $980,000. We have a track loader. And then we have three roll-off trucks. And the roll-off trucks that we're replacing are yours 2004, '05, and '07. So we're looking at, you know, the youngest roll-off truck we're replacing is 17 years old. Those things take a beating, and they've been repaired and put back out on the road. So in order to keep our recycling operation active and keep our collections active, we need to make these investments. I think I talked about the grinder once before and how important that is to generating mulch for our actual operation. That's not something we can compromise. And the track loader is something used up on the hill, for those of you that don't know. Our track loaders are 2018. They generally have five years of useful life or 11,000 hours. As of now, we've exceeded the 11,000 hours, and by the time we place an order for a new one, we'll be looking at a year more worth of hours. A track loader does things like spread, cover dirt, spreads sludge that comes from the treatment plants, all things that are an absolute necessity in the day-to-day operations of a landfill. So we are not by any means carelessly taking that balance, that 550,000, out of the balance as opposed to ordering that equipment. Those are absolute must-haves.
Thank you, Mr. Spaby. Joe?
Has there been any discussion with the municipalities about the $78 a ton, what impact that will have with, like for Salisbury or for any of the haulers? Has there been any conversations with them? I mean, you came up with that number from somewhere. I was wondering if you had reached out to these, you know, being, we hadn't done that before, and I hadn't done that before, and the county executive, this is your suggestion. What are they saying about that?
So I spoke out to Seagull, I spoke to Salisbury, and I also spoke to Hebron yesterday to let them know, those were the municipalities that actually reached out to me, so I reached back out to them. So this decision was actually just made yesterday, and we wanted to make sure it was accepted by the council. I know the council had their own suggestion, and then we went with the 78. So we will be sending something out as soon as it's approved.
So what did they say about this 78?
Well, I think that they're a lot happier with 78. I mean, I think any increases are going to affect people, we know that. But obviously, I think the 78, and I don't want to speak for them, but I'm pretty sure it's a little bit more manageable than 100.
What about an effective date? Is there, would there be any need? Because some of these contracts have already been signed with the municipalities, and all of a sudden, you know, they're immediately faced with losses. So I'm wondering if this isn't an effective date that we could implement six months from now as opposed to immediately? That would, I think, alleviate some of the concerns and, you know, whether there's a graduated implementation or not.
That was actually something that Mr. Spaby recommended yesterday to us in an email. So if you all, if you think the preference should be January 1st as opposed to, I'm totally okay with that. We would just potentially have to redo the resolution.
We'd have to say that.
We can amend it.
Remend it? I mean, I'm okay with that if you all feel that that's a better.
I would be, I'd be in favor with, I know that, Charles, we got to get it up, right? We got to get it up, but we just didn't see this, a lot of people just didn't see this coming, and we don't, yeah, let's, how are we going to word the amendment?
Amendment, it's effective January 1st, 2025.
Can I ask?
Yes, Bob. I don't know the answer to this, but you've got budget numbers in here. If you don't do that for six months, those numbers have to be changed.
Right.
With all due respect to your, your assistant director, I don't know if he has that number off the top of his head as to what the effect is for six months.
I do not. I would have to go back.
Do you arbitrarily say it's half?
I was having a hard time coming up with just an estimate as it was to increase it further. I would say it would probably require another 1.5 million, but I'd need to sit down and look at the numbers. It'd be kind of hard for me to look at the top of my head to do that.
Stay on it. Why couldn't we postpone this anyway?
Just, I mean, it currently goes into effect July 1st. Goes into effect July 1st. Our first meeting in July is July 2nd. So I don't think it would hurt to change it on July 2nd, right? Anybody?
Well, I'm not in that business. One day it's going to hurt.
I've done it before, so it's a experiment.
I think because the resolution, or in effect, calls for the $100, it'd be at $100 for July 1st.
But they could do the 78, and then we could amend it to, like, it would just be one day.
Yeah, we'll do the, that's, yeah, that's a good idea. We'll do the 78 right now, and then July 2nd, we're going to make the amendment. Give you, give it a little time, do some math.
Yeah.
I appreciate the extra time. Thank you.
That just means the landfill's not going to have any business on that day.
Yeah.
Right?
Down for the first. You guys can take off that day.
No, we're not doing that.
There's an idea.
Comment, John. Just so the public is aware of this process, if we were to approve this today, there'd be a $3 million swing in the projected tipping fees that we have to make up through the budget that's already been approved. So that, that's what this back and forth is all about. And if we decide to delay the implementation of this past July 1st, all those numbers that we've been given yesterday will obviously change. It's the old domino effect. So that's what we're going back and forth about. I think the best thing is going to be to pass it today at 78. Try to notify as many people as possible, as Jeff said, don't show up on the 1st, you know? And if they come in, it could be a courtesy from the people who are working there, even though they may have traveled quite a few miles and say, look, tomorrow it's a different rate, just so you know this. Kind of like when you go in to buy a car. But, Mr. Spaby, had input?
Just one other thing. In keeping with our mutual understanding here, that as an organization, we can and have to do a better job informing others of impact. What goes along with the decision to delay the implementation six months is a kicking, kicking of the can down the road. So the amount of money that we need to recover and the effect that we need to have on the influence flow, use of the landfill and hence capacity, what may have been a move from 78 to, I don't know, hypothetically, 85 in January, if we're going to do 78 in January, the next move after that would indeed have to be more than 85. There's a cost of money in delaying and a cost of capacity that we have to keep in check, because there simply won't be any place to put the waste.
Yeah, and we could appreciate that, but I think the key is to making sure that the companies and the municipalities recognize that graduate, that implementation and can adjust with their contracts.
Understood.
Ms. Hurley?
We have our Director of Finance on Zoom, and she was wondering if she could speak.
I think Charles said everything quite well. Pam, are you there?
Were we missing something?
Yes, I am here.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Good to hear you.
So I can turn on my camera if you'd like, it doesn't matter to me. My concern with delaying any increase at all is that, as Charles stated, we would have to come up with additional money that we would use out of fund balance to make our budget balance, and we would be at $67, which would be the lowest in the area for six more months. That causes us to continue to be the, most likely be the location of ease and cheapness for everybody to deliver to. And as Mr. Swaby stated, we would continue to be the place that everything comes to, and we will continue to fill up our landfill faster. And we will have very hard decisions that we will have to make in regards to our landfill. This was one hard decision to make. If we go to the 78 now and keep it at 78 now, we have a number that makes our budget balanced, yes, it is an increase, but it is an increase that is necessary for us to continue to have a landfill available to our county residents.
Yeah, and we respect that, Pam. We certainly do understand that. Again, though, it comes down to the fact of, with the companies and the municipalities, if they'd had maybe six months' notice to enact this, to anticipate this increase and enact it within their contracts, that we'd all be on square one and everything would be great. But I think what we're trying to do is a compromise.
We are the ones currently taking the loss.
I appreciate that.
Just keep that, we're running this as a business. So we are subsidizing that business. I just want council to be aware of that. We are subsidizing the business of a landfill by keeping it at $67 for any more time.
Shane?
You know, I think.
Here's your mic, Shane.
I think we need to listen to what Pam's saying. The more I'm thinking about it, I don't agree now with such an increase as what it was going to be, but this increase, if it's along the same lines with the other counties, seems to be fair. And if we do extend this, it's going to, it's going to cost the county money. I think Pam brings up a good point.
You know, I was informed, and I don't know how true it is, I say I don't know how true it is. I shouldn't have said that. I guess I should believe what people tell me. That there is a law that no trash should come into our landfill from out of a county, out of, from another county? Is that correct?
I'm not sure if it's a law, but I do know that, like, I talked to Weston yesterday.
Is there a law?
And they're very, I would assume, because he said that it was, it was against their policy for any trash to be from the outside, but I don't know if that is Maryland.
I don't, I defer to Mr. Wilber on that.
Not aware of a law, as you stated.
Do we do it by policy or by law?
Probably policy.
Policy. Now, it has to be a law, though, for it to be enforceable, correct?
Ideally, yes.
Yes. I mean, it couldn't, it can't be enforced unless it's a law.
Well, we can say, if somebody shows up, we can say, this is our policy, and they've got a New Jersey load of trash.
But if they rent, if they rent a vehicle and it says Maryland tags on it or whatever, you know?
Yeah, I mean, and you have somebody from Wycomico County doing demolition work in Worcester County or Somerset County, you know, you won't know.
No, you won't.
But, you know, if they have to sign an affidavit or whatever stating that it does come from Wycomico County, you know, that's, that's been our big problem. I mean, because we have been competitive or less, you know, cheaper, I guess you can say, than other, than other counties.
Even if they sign an affidavit, you've got, how do you, who's going to be the police that goes out and checks?
Well, you know, at some point in time, maybe somebody will be halfway honest with, you know, about.
They do waste audits. I actually talked to Weston about this, and it's literally a group of individuals that you hire to come in and literally go through the trash, very similar to what our deputies do, and try to find addresses and things like that. But there's really no way, he said, that they enforce it. He said, right now, the only thing that is probably keeping the people at bay is the fact that their costs are higher.
Higher, yeah.
And they're at $80.
You know, that's, that's another, and I brought this up during budget session, that's another thing that we may, at some point in time, if we keep incurring our costs, you know, our largest contributor to the landfill, I suppose, is Salisbury. And would they make a move to do what Ocean City's done? And it's my understanding that the county now has to subsidize, or Worcester County has to subsidize their landfill, because at some point in time, they did lose Ocean City. So that's something else we have to watch out for. So you got to, you got that fine balance there you have to reach. I think for a point of clarification, so we normally don't let the public speak during these type of discussions, but I do think it's for a point of clarification, possibly to help the council with the information, I would ask the gentleman from Seagull if he would like to make a comment in reference to the questions at the table. You'd go to the podium if you don't mind.
Hey, everybody. Andrew Dooley, Seagull Disposal.
Take it a little louder, you know, a little.
Andrew Dooley, Seagull Disposal. My stepdad and I own Seagull Disposal. We started it in 2019, five years in business. I want to thank everybody for, this happened Friday, we were alerted, we made a few phone calls, and now we're meeting Tuesday. I think this, I have a lot of confidence in our local government that I didn't have before, because this happened so quickly, it was addressed so quickly, and I just want to thank everybody for bringing this up. A couple of things, we've already billed our customers for July, and that's why this is really concerning. We have long-term contracts with municipalities like Hebron, and this would crush us, frankly. If, even if it goes to 78 immediately, it would crush us. And it would crush other private haulers that I've spoken with. Everybody's very concerned for their family, for their business. The other thing is, I don't think there's as much trash flowing into Wycomico County as they think. Because when you do the math, so in Delaware, where do you guys think this trash is coming from? Because in Worcester County, maybe, but you, you know, you can only haul so many tons of trash at a time. When you add up the fuel, the hourly payroll on your employees hauling from one county to another, I just don't think it's happening to the extent that you think it is because of the differential in price. From 67 to 80 per ton, you haul six tons, how much are you saving? I'm sure it's happening, I'm sure it is. But I don't think it's going to be that big of a difference, and I think you guys will see when you do raise the rate, whether it's in six months or whenever it is, I don't think you're going to have the decrease that you think. And I think a decrease can be worse than having a lot, and I know there's issues with capacity, I understand that, I understand the landfill business. But Worcester County was crushed when Ocean City pulled out, because they were counting on that, on those numbers. And I wonder, when you're doing your budget, are you accounting for a loss in tonnage with this increase? You are accounting for a significant loss?
Am I allowed to, just a comment? So we went through an elasticity analysis, and what that basically means in the academic term is, every time there's a change in price, in our case upward, there's a response in demand of a reduction in demand. So we got information about that and applied it to how we extrapolated what revenue an increase in price would give. So we do expect that.
What kind of decrease are you looking at?
I didn't bring that information with me today, but, you know, you can, you can extract that response information from prior studies that have been done. So theoretically, they take the actual response and record it, and then you apply that to what your projections are for solid waste and reduce those projections accordingly, according to your price change.
And that's in this county?
Yes.
This is based on previous rate increases?
No, it wasn't from this county. There was no such information available, even locally, at all.
Right.
This is industry information.
Right, and that, that's my concern, and, I mean, it's just a concern, these counties are pretty spread out. If you did that study in counties where they're right next to each other, and it's not a long-distance to haul, that makes perfect sense. But with this distance, I, I don't, Wycomico County's the largest county here producing trash, besides, you know, leaving out Ocean City. And I know that as a private hauler, because I service Somerset, Worcester, and Wycomico. I'm sure there will be a decrease. I don't think it's going to be as significant as you think. I really don't.
We appreciate the, thank you.
And this will crush us. If you guys go to 78 July 1st, it will crush us, and it will crush our customers, our municipalities. It will. But thank you all for this. I'm really impressed. From Friday to Tuesday, and we're speaking about this. Thank you for letting me speak about this, and thank you for being here.
Thanks again. You hit the right part of the calendar. Jeff?
Bob, this isn't, Bob, we're not doing public comments. I appreciate it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Just gonna give you a little economics.
I understand.
From 60.
I got you. Thank you. Thank you. I'd, I'd like to make a motion. We delay the implementation of this to January 1st, 2025.
Motion's there, second.
I think, I'm sorry, I think the motion has, you gotta revert back to $67 a ton and have the increase go into effect July 1st. Isn't that the motion?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, I think the budget actually, if I may, increased it to the $100 a ton.
I understand that, but my understanding is that the council is, that Mr. Merritt's motion is to not have the increase from $67 go into effect until July 1st, whether that's $78 or $100 a ton. Is that not correct?
The amendment would implement $78 on July, on January 1st.
Right, but you, but.
It's already $100, so you've got to change it back from $100 to something. So I, if you're not going to implement it until Ju- January 1st, it's got to be changed back to $67 today. I think.
We revert back to the passing the motion without an amendment because in effect, July 1st, and we do the second. Yeah, we kinda got off track. I apologize.
Unfortunately, um, you, you can't amend the dollars without amending the revenue and expense associated with those dollars. So if you, if you don't amend it to 78, which is what is in front of you, we don't have the calculation to what the budget impact is if you're going back to 67.
Yeah, that, that was my misunderstanding, that was my misstatement, really. I think we had already come to a conclusion to do the 78 until July 2nd, then we would revisit it. Sorry.
Yeah, you wanna take, you know, pull back your, your motion.
Yeah, because we're gonna need to redo the whole resolution.
Well, from what, from what it looks like now, we're gonna maintain and pass this resolution to get it to 78, and then we'll have to, on, uh, July 2nd, we will have to amend it to, uh, I guess maybe January 1st.
Would you like us to do that math and then send over the resolution with the account numbers?
Oh, yeah, that would be a big help.
Yes.
That would be a good help. So, sorry about that.
So I will rescind my motion.
We got a side try for a second.
You need withdrawal, withdrawal.
I will, I will withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
Until the next meeting.
So just so the, so the public understands, that means that this will go into effect January 1st from 67 to 78, and the council's intent is to meet on July the 2nd to implement, to change the implementation date. And that will buy, hopefully buy the contractors and the municipalities enough time. All right, any other discussion?
Just, I.
Yes.
I just want to, of course, make note, we've got to continue in the county to reduce, you know, this wasn't made in Wacomiko County. This is a plastic, you know, plastic is trash, by the way. 4.2 to 4.6% of it, as we've said before, is recyclable. If you had a job, 100 employees, and only 4.2 of them showed up, maybe that's the cat, I don't know who the point 2 is, but, you know, you would think that that's an abysmal failure, right? So we've got to find ways to stop this, we've got to find ways to stop overloading our, um, our landfill, and that'll then help this, uh, so. And by the way, I do want to make sure, I know we are doing this because it involves the budget, but once again, I want to highlight, we should be making decisions that are taking effect in FY '27 or '26 that are two or three years out, so that we can all feel very comfortable, okay, we know two years in advance, this is, this is going in effect. But I get it, I understand. This directly impacts our budget, which is why, but.
Are you suggesting that they?
No suggestions.
They're not?
Just so, just so we understand, on July 2nd, will we, will we be reconsidering this resolution? Or we, will we be expecting a new resolution entirely from the administration?
I, I would say a new resolution.
Okay.
New resolution.
That'll give us, because that'll give us the dates, the numbers, the prices, great.
Once we get this, uh, ironed out and figured out, uh, I'm just gonna kinda go off what Josh says. Can we figure out a five-year plan on, uh, that way we can, and once we figure out a five-year plan, if we decide to do this, send it to our municipals and our local contractors, so they can say, this is what's gonna happen to us in five years. We need to be ready. So, I, I don't know. I'm just throwing that idea out there, so.
We, we do have the essence of that plan now. We're not at the permitting stage for it yet, so it hasn't had that initial exposure, but we can do the extra outreach in advance and share with them what the draft plan is.
And then something we can approve, like, now, so that they can, they know what's gonna happen. Yeah, they're.
Right.
Right, yeah, you get what I mean. Yeah, that way I can go ahead and we don't have to have this conversation again with any of our haulers.
Understood.
So, thank you.
Entertained motion to approve Resolution 72 dash 2024. So moved, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Thank you very much. We'll see you on July 1st.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Mr. Benson, good morning.
Good morning. Um, we're here for legislative bill number 2024-04. Uh, it is an act to authorize and empower Wacomiko County to borrow on the faith and credit of Wacomiko County, Maryland, an aggregate amount in not exceeding $10,250,000, and evidence such borrowing by the issue and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county, proceed, proceeds thereof to be used by Wacomiko County to finance, refinance, or reimburse the costs of certain, of a certain project for the Board of Education, including costs of planning, design, acquisition, construction, improvement, installation, renovation, rehabilitation, repairing, refurbishing, furnishing, and equipping of land, facilities, buildings, and structures, together with costs and financing costs related thereto, as further described herein as applicable authorizations and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation refunding bonds in order to currently refund or advance refund any of the bonds issued pursuant to the authority of this act, provide the aggregate principal amount of such series of refunding bonds does not exceed 130% of the aggregate principal amount of bonds refunded therefrom, exempting all such bonds and refunding bonds provisions of Sections 19205 and 19206 to the Local Government Article, the Antited Code of Maryland, authorizations and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bond anticipation notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $10,250,000 prior to and in anticipation of any sale of the bonds authorized hereby in order to finance, refinance, reimburse costs of such project on an interim basis, capitalize interest and financing costs. Authorizing the county council to pass resolutions prior to issuing any or part of the bonds, uh, for refunding bonds or bond anticipation notes in order to fix, prescribe, determine, provide for the details of such obligation, and the issuance and sale thereof providing that all such bonds, refunding bonds, and bond anticipation notes should be general obligations of the county to which the full faith, the faith and credit of the county are pledged and authorized, authorizing annual appropriations to pay the principal and interest on such obligations and levying a tax to meet said appropriations, subject to any lawful limitation on the county's taxing power set forth in the charter. If that taxing power may relate to such obligation, providing dispersment of the proceeds of the bonds, refunding bonds or bond anticipation notes authorized thereby, hereby, providing certain rules of construction and that the provisions of this act should be liberally construed, providing that the provisions of this act should be separate, separable and generally relating to issuance of sales such bonds, refunding bonds, or bond anticipation notes authorized hereby. You have Pam Olin on this, on Zoom, um, who's here, and Mr. Wilber's here, uh, for anybody who has any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Entertained, entertained motion from council to approve introduction of legislative bill 2024-04.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Just so the public is aware, it's bonding 10.2, $10,250,000, uh, for a Fruitland primary school. That's what this is for. Yes, James? We got a motion, second, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, good. James?
Yes, so, um, um, I think, I don't know if this is possible, maybe Charles or Pam or anyone can answer this, but, uh, I think going forward, um, I, I'm not a big fan of borrowing all this money, and, uh, especially when we've got this recession that, obviously, I'm gonna break the nutshell. We're walking right into a recession. Um, it's looming over our heads. We've had our whole delegation talk about, you know, tough times ahead, and, uh, I, 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 first off, I wasn't a big fan of funding this school this year because of how much money it costs, but that's neither here nor there. But what I would like to ask is, is there a possibility in the future, can we set up a fund? A fund for school buildings? So it doesn't look like we're just pulling it out of reserve funds, um, but we're, we're saving to invest in a building. I don't know if that is a possibility that we can look at, um, in the future, future council meetings. That way, we don't have to look at each other and say, can we afford this? No, we don't have to think that. We've already got the building paid for in a, in a fund, a school fund for a building. Is that, is that possible, Charles, Paul, Pam, anyone?
Um, so, anything's possible in that respect. The issue is, is that Pam Olin, Finance Director, sorry, I didn't state that at the beginning. The issue is, is that because debt service for schools comes from, um, the general taxes of the county and the general revenues of the county, any money that we set aside for schools and set aside for the future for schools is money that can't be used for current obligations of the county as well. So, um, we have to make that decision at the time of the budget that we literally want to say X dollars of revenues are being set aside for future budget, budgetary purposes um, for school construction. And in our, um, current, in the current schedule of schools listed, there is always a school in line for the next. And there is no, um, unless we make a pause and don't fund a school in a period of time, there's always a school waiting, and so there's no real ability for us to put that money aside for a school. So the most advantageous way to continue to build a school is to borrow the funds, if the, if that is the directive of the council and executive. The directive is, is to use those funds that we have to borrow so that those schools can stay on track.
Right, but if we were to take a pause for a year and a half, uh, it, it is possible.
A year and a half isn't going to be sufficient. I mean, our share of this project is $40 million. So, or 30, 27 to 40 million dollars. I don't, I, I, please don't quote me on that number. I just happen to know that we're doing 20 million this year, and I think there's another $27 million in the wings, and we've already funded a portion. So unless we take a long pause, we can't save up $50 million in a one-to-two-year period. That's just not the way our structure is, um, is created. And with a revenue cap at 2%, which the decision of council was to not break the revenue cap for schools, which is our only ability to do that, as council's well aware, setting aside money to fund a full school construction is not something that's going to be easily possible.
Okay.
I think to answer your question too, James, it's sort of dictated by what our reserves are and what our debt obligation is, and when we recognize, and the Board of Education certainly recognizes it well, because they follow the county's budget as a whole. Uh, when we see that we pay down the debt obligation to a certain amount, or we know exactly when it will be paid down to a respectable amount, then we recognize that we can afford to bond more at that point in time, because we are constantly paying down as we accept new obligations. Either that or, or something out of reserves. It's very unusual to take money out of reserves. Uh, but the fact that our, that our reserves currently are so high, that's what we're choosing to do, and the interest rates are extremely high right now. But it's sort of controlled by what we're, our debt obligation is and what our reserves are, how they're growing. Any other comments, questions?
If I may, one more thing. Um, not to answer James, but just the timeline. We're introducing this legislation today. The second reading would be on the second meeting in July. Then we need to wait out the 60-day referendum period to then allow us the ability to go to market in October, to close on these bonds by the end of October. So that's the current timeline. Um, I can't remember the dates. I just know that second meeting in July, I believe, council will have the second reading of this, will have a public hearing, will have a second, or will have a resolution in front of council, I believe, second meeting in September. And the second meeting in October is when we would do, like we have done the last couple of years, where council would, um, kinda have a split session where we would have to come back later in the afternoon. We would, we would go to market the morning of the second meeting in Ju-, in October, and, um, have to come to council to accept, uh, the offer that we receive. And, um, and then that would then start the timeline. It's typically about 10 days to two weeks after that, that we go to closing.
Thank you, Ms. Olin.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill 2024-04, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Introduction of legislative bill 2024-04 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Everybody have a good day. Mr. President, um, that date would be July the 16th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. for the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Mr. Benson, are you ready?
I've recovered, so this one's much shorter. We're introducing legislative bill 2024-05, an act to amend Chapter 29 of the Wacomiko County Code titled Finance to Establish Article 3 Title Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund to establish the use and distribution process for money received for community reinvestment and repair fund. This is being introduced today, and we have Mr. Andrew Illuminati from the council, the county attorney's office, and Mr. Tim Bosman from the local management board here. I would simply note, um, for the council that this was here on a work session. During the work session, the council indicated, I think, that they wanted to be involved with the manner in which funds were distributed. Um, and Mr. Illuminati was good enough to draft a bill in accord with the, the work session. And when the bill came in, I sent Mr. Illuminati an email, um, and Mr. Illuminati was kind enough to respond. And just for the council's benefit, and to show what the intent is of this bill, is, uh, Mr. Illuminati stated that to date, council is not appropriating any money to the local management board from this fund. As no, uh, money from the fund has been appropriated to the local management board for FY '24-25. It will absolutely require council to approve the appropriation, the processes, the local management board advertise, evaluates, and makes a recommendation. Council did not want to do, it did not want to do those steps. The local management board will then advise council of the recommended awards. Based on those recommendations, council will vote to fund the projects with OSB money, which the local management board will administer in order to satisfy the reporting requirements local management board will provide the executive with the necessary information per report for submittal every two years. Point being that the intent of this bill, uh, as drafted, is to implement the, uh, desire of the council as expressed at the, uh, during the work session, and that's what, the way the bill's drafted.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Benson. Entertained motion from council to introduce legis-, excuse me, legislative bill 2024-05.
So moved, second.
Motion's second. Discussion. John, good morning. If you could state for the record your name and your, and your title, please.
Sure. Tim Bosman, Director of Local Management Board.
And good morning, Andrew Illuminati, County Attorney's Office.
And, um, Mr. Illuminati, would you want to, uh, continue with what Mr. Benson said, as, just for the public's benefit?
Sure. The way the law is laid out, the fund is limited by state law as to what it can be used for. So funding community-based initiatives intended to benefit low-income communities, and funding community-based initiatives that serve disproportionately impacted areas, and then any administrative expenses to satisfy A and B. Working with Mr. Bosman, trying to find how to identify low-income communities, uh, was important. And Mr. Bosman directed me to a statewide initiative called the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, interim report on neighborhood indicators of poverty. And so the state routinely, uh, updates that, and the, is not broken down by, um, ZIP codes, of which there are only 15 in Wacomiko County, but it's actually broken down by census block groups, of which there are 72. So using the metrics that the state applies throughout the state, 51 of the, uh, census block groups would qualify for community-based initiative funding. And then the disproportionately impacted areas, that information explicitly comes from the Office of Social Equity. There are then the limitations on the money by state law. It cannot be used for, to fund law enforcement agencies, and it cannot be used to supplant funding that otherwise would have been appropriated by the government.
So the public is aware, this is cannabis funds that we'll be receiving, that the county will be receiving, and the purpose of this legislative bill is to establish a fund and the process for distribution.
Correct. There is gonna be cannabis money that is not encumbered, but money that comes directly from the Office of Social Equity will be subject to this. State law does not, um, restrict the way that the other cannabis money can be spent. State law does not restrict the way that the other cannabis money can be spent. So, we have a way of keeping track of both. This will be OSB money. The other money will be used to fund initiatives.
Do both fund sources go through the same exact approval process before being distributed?
The other one would be just normal budget money, so that council would appropriate that.
Okay, understood.
So, council has not appropriated any of the cannabis money to date. This, therefore, the LMB will advertise. The awards, as requested, will be, you know, recommendations for LMB to council. In speaking with finance, this is going to be treated like a grant. These are restricted funds. It's not an explicit grant, because, but there are reporting requirements at the end of the day. There'll be a resolution then to approve going forward. So, this is exactly as was requested.
Good. Mr. Bosman, do you have anything you want to add?
Just that with these, treating them like grant funds, we'll oversee them like any of other grants, you know, we'll perform site visits, you know, request invoices, do financial monitoring, performance monitoring, we'll have performance measures, you know, they have to meet for these grants, that we will come back and report, you know, how these different vendors are doing. And then I just think it's important to note that in the bill, what defines a community-based initiative, and that's a program or service that provides education, vocational education or rehabilitation, job training, health, or social services to individuals in these areas. So, that's, you know, basically, you know what's encumbered in the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Bosman. Any council questions?
I have a question. What, you say it was 51, you targeted 51 neighborhoods?
Correct, 51 of the.
Could I have a copy of that?
I can send you a copy of the report.
Please.
And flag the page.
Please.
I tried printing it, it came out really fuzzy, because we couldn't get the original JPG.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. Gentlemen, thank you for helping us work through this process. I think everybody in the state is wrestling with this, right? This is all groundbreaking.
Yes.
Because of the legalization of cannabis and the funds coming out of all that. So, thank you.
Josh?
I just, of course, I just got a couple of questions, but I do want to say from the beginning, I did see on CBS Evening News last night, the governor pardoned 150,000 people in Maryland that had nonviolent cannabis-related crimes. Of course, I do want to highlight, you know, all of those crimes, quote unquote, crimes that had happened, you know, we put people away, we took fathers out of families and stuck them in jail for periods of, you know, for two decades. We did that for the equivalent of basically having a beer or six-pack in your car. That dramatically impacted the American family. So, what this is trying to get at, if I understand that right, is trying to rectify that situation to some degree. You know, I want to make sure, I said this last time when we were talking about this in an open work session, but, you know, whatever happens with these funds, it should be a transformational, not transactional, right? And I don't want to just give people a, here's a new, you know, court, you know, play on, here's a new, some more soccer balls, and, you know, and here's a backyard, you can grow some vegetables or whatever, like, it needs to be something that is based on financial literacy, the job training. I'm glad to hear that. I think that anything we can do there to rectify that situation, the better. I guess my main question just comes at, as it's currently drafted, A1C. In the, it says for, I guess, under permitted uses, am I right? Yeah. A permitted uses, the fund may only be used for, and it mentions, of course, the community-based initiatives and the, that serve impacted areas and low-income, but C is any related administrative costs. Are, is there a cap currently on administrative expenses? I know we have the issues in the world that I work in, in agriculture and conservation and natural resources. We've got a lot of money that is basically taken from its intended use to use for administrative costs, and over time, it just becomes a place to fund only administrative costs. I don't want to use that as a way to only fund the work that you all, you know, that your great organization is doing, but I want to make sure that there's, that that doesn't become the primary driver, and that over time, the budget doesn't shift where, that's just where we're pulling to fund that work or anything like that.
If there's no programs, there'll be no administrative expenses. So, it's not offsetting LMB. That's a completely separate budget item. This is just for executing the OSB objectives. It can be administrative expenses.
Good.
Any questions? All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill 2024-05, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Legislative bill 20, excuse me, 2024-05 has been introduced unanimously. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Mr. Benson?
Next item is legislative bill 2024-06, an act to amend Chapter 22 of the Wycomico County Code titled County Property, Section 22-1, titled County-Owned Property, add the provision on the use of county-owned property. And this was being introduced by Mr. Holloway.
Been a motion from council to approve the introduction of legislative bill 2024-06.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay. Can we start?
Sure.
Well, regardless of what people said, you know, at our public meetings, this isn't anything to tie the hands of the county as far as having motorized events. This is about the protection of neighborhoods. Now, it could be anybody in this room or anybody watching PAC 14, this could affect if, if it was allowed to continue the way it is. Basically, anytime there's a motorized event that happens on county-owned property, it'll have to be publicized and brought before a council. And I'll go back a few years. They started Bike Week in Wycomico County at Winter Place Park. Great place to have Bike Week, worked out great. However, a lot of the neighbors were upset because of the noise. So, they finally, after a couple of years, they moved it to the ball stadium, to Shorebird Stadium, another great place to have it. This only does, what does what it's supposed to do. It's supposed to inform the people in the neighborhoods if there's going to be a motorized event.
Questions or comments? Seeing on, all those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill 2024-06, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Introduction of legislative bill 2024-06 passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Mr. President, for all three of these bills that were introduced today, the public hearing would be on July the 16th at 10:00 a.m.
Ms. Olin, this time we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make in general, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
My name is Joe White. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. Andrew Dooley, I thought you did a nice job, very articulate. It was great to have you here. I think one of the great examples of just what you all were able to do here as the council and, and other folks as well from the government, the delaying of the landfill was done in the public. And in the public openness, you even had to maybe admit that you made some mistakes or misinformation, maybe, but it was fixed in the public. Another example that we've witnessed at the meetings is a removal, very quickly, of recycling stations. And the converse happened. It was not in public. And what I wanted to speak about today is something else that I think also falls into that category, and I do have a call to action that I'd like for you to consider. Since your last meeting and you, where you approved the budget, which also included $1.6 million to the Salisbury Fire Department for fire service rendered to the county, the local media has, and other media groups have reported that you've actually cut the budget by $400,000. And I've attended many of these meetings, and I know that's not true. It's very frustrating. I am not an official member of the Parsonsburg Fire Department, but I am a very active member of the community that helps them raise money. And I believe that that unilateral decision by our current executive and also coupled with Bob Culver, a former executive, kicking this issue down the road is exactly why we need this charter amendment in November. One of the things that's not done when we talk about numbers is, and it just doesn't come up, is how many times the Parsonsburg Fire Department is sitting in Station 1, covering Salisbury, while they're out on one of their calls, okay? And I heard this rhetoric that maybe they don't show up to the county. You know, it's really, really disheartening when you hear that someone might not show up to help you, okay? That's, that's tough to hear. But I think that there's a solution, okay? We need an open dialogue of how we're going to keep score, okay? That's not done. If we're going to let the local media do it, then we know it's going to be done wrong, okay? They've already messed this last one up. So, let's come up with a scorecard. If we were going to go out and play golf, there's lots of different games we can play. We can do metal play, stroke play, match play, wolf, all those things. But before we tee off, we're going to decide on what the, what the rules are. Otherwise, you don't know winners and losers, right? Every, every taxpayer in Salisbury is or was in Wycomico County, and they deserve reputation from both of their governments. But every firefighter in this county deserves respect, the paid ones and the volunteers. And by just kicking this down the road, we're disrespecting them. I'm asking for this county council, just like Shane Baker did, I thought you did a wonderful job with the property tax, and I know you didn't do it alone, but let's do it that way. Let's come up with a scorecard. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Morning, folks. Another Joe, Joe Vinoce, A. They're called vowels. What you saw earlier today, and I'm glad, Mr. Dooley and stepdad, sir, I don't know your name, sorry, but, um, did I say it right, or?
He's not stepdad.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. See, we all make mistakes. But I'm glad you were here at the.
We're not going to have issues. There's no reason for.
Excuse me, sir, you got a line, please? If you don't mind. He's at the podium. Respect his time.
Thank you, sir. And I don't mean it in any harsh way. Okay, well, I'll see you on Eastern Shore undercover. Anyway, you saw earlier this morning and now, why it's important to tell your customers, your fellow business people, your friends, why in November, it's so important to vote yes on this charter amendment. You are seeing in real time what happens when you have a lack of transparency, a complete lack of regard for the taxpayers, for the businesses in this community, when people make, excuse me, unilateral decisions, much like the closing of our recycling center in District 4. So, I'm glad you're here to see it. I'm glad people watching at PAC 14 can see it. I hope, as a fellow 100 and Central graduate, Hannah, that the local media sees it, because I think it is important that we see what is going on here. I commend the council for doing something that took great courage and still unfortunately takes a great toll on your personal lives, running the risk of what certain people in local outlets will say or smear you with, putting up with all sorts of vilification, even if it's not true. You know, we live in a time where, you know, political courage or courage in general is not particularly abundant, nor is integrity. You know, my dad always taught me that integrity is doing the right thing, even when you know no one is watching, which is why, Josh, I'm very disappointed in you. I have to say that in a respectful way, but I'm really disappointed. You represent mainly the city of Salisbury, and this referendum on the council executive was merely a vote to allow us to have a voice in doing that. You denied us that vote. You can be personally against it, but I think it's bad form when it's not giving the people an opportunity. That's all. It's an opportunity. Vote yes, vote no. I get why Mr. Winn didn't do it, but that's a different case. But I expect better from my representatives, and I know the people of Salisbury do. Lastly, with regard to something that has come up increasingly in this discussion, the funding of schools, I encourage anybody, if you're going to run for elected office and you're going to talk about and vote on important things, please understand how schools are funded and built. We have a university right down the road at Salisbury. You can take a class on it. You can have a lecture from a professor. It's an important thing to know how to do that if you're going to represent thousands of people. So, please, get that basic civic understanding understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vinoce.
Yeah.
Mike Goldberg, Wycomico County. Of the more than 3,000 counties in the U.S., only 488 have an elected county executive. That's just 16% of all counties nationwide. Only nine of Maryland's 23 counties have a county executive, and Wycomico is the only one on the eastern shore. There's a reason that so few counties have an executive. It's because experience shows that it does not work very well. Some argue that our current form of government provides checks and balances, but this is not the case. Our charter vests enormous power in the executive, allowing important decisions, having profound impacts, to be made by the county executive unilaterally. Essentially, we are being ruled by executive order rather than by a legislative process. The current executive routinely usurps powers not granted under the charter and exploits its many ambiguities to exercise powers that were never intended. A councilmatic form of government will distribute power among seven councilmen, providing representation for the diverse interests of the various regions of the county and requiring a consensus to pass legislation. This is the hallmark of a democratic form of government rather than ruled by executive fiat. Getting elected to public office requires a very different skill set than governing. Ms. Giordano did a very good job of getting herself elected and fooled a lot of voters, but her lack of knowledge of finance, law, real estate, and organizational management, in addition to her complete lack of diplomatic skills, is proving to be a disaster. We need a professional administrative manager directed by the legislative body who has the education, training, and experience to manage our day-to-day affairs and effectively represent us in Annapolis. Under Giordano, population and economic growth have stagnated as employers continue to flee the county. Crime has become rampant. We have lost $2 million in disparity grants from the state, and the executive continues to wage war against her constituents through her actions and frequent disparaging public comments and misrepresentation of facts while using a gossip columnist as her minister of propaganda. Her actions and unstable behaviors are an aberration. Are we better off than we were before we had the county executive, and particularly before Ms. Giordano? To anyone paying attention, it is apparent that we are not. There's been a 40% turnover of the county population in the past 20 years, and it's time for current residents to exercise our right of self-determination. Therefore, I ask all voters in Wycomico County to vote to return to a council management form of government, as 84% of counties across America, across America have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
My name is Monica Brooks. I'm president of Wycomico County NAACP and a resident of Wycomico County. Just a couple of things. First, I did want to say I'm so happy to hear about what's going to be coming out of the bill 2024-05, the finance money that's coming from the cannabis. With us having the revenue cap that this council refuses to raise, continually refuses to raise, then perhaps this will be an opportunity for us to actually get some things put into place in the communities to help uplift the community in general. There's been references to people saying that, you know, we talk about crime, we've talked about different things that are happening. However, there are, as I've mentioned every, the last several meetings that I've come to, lots of underlying issues and things that could be mitigated by financing in some of these communities. Just to hear that 58 out of the 72 of the areas of the census blocks in our county are eligible for low income, that should have us quaking in our boots. We know oftentimes, having low opportunities for advancement or, or job placement, or, as Josh mentioned, so many fathers taken out of homes or mothers taken out of homes for minor infractions that, that have a ripple effect. Some of that is at the core of what's happening with some of our kids in some of these schools. I'm not saying that everyone should not be accountable. Some people need to be accountable for certain things. But how do we get here? And what is the county willing to do to figure this out and also put funds into it? So, these funds are going to go a long way for communities to be uplifted, positivity, increased activities, mentorship, even helping, gosh, I'm sad of hearing about the thing with the schools, that's a no-go, but we found, as I keep saying, that 37 million or whatever it was for the Taj Mahal, we found that money. That was prioritized, but the schools continue not to be prioritized. And then yet, we talk about increasing the housing and, and, you know, we talk about affordable housing versus whatever, whatever the definition of that, which we know we need more. know we need more affordable housing as well, because our, the amount of money most people make in this county is super low. But then we talk about bringing all these new businesses that's, in some ways, some of these people are going to bring a, a level of tax, you know, a tax level that is also going to bring other peoples down so low, right? So we have to find a way that we can, yes, benefit our community. We want our community to thrive. We want us to do well. But we also have to keep forget, you keep forgetting about the boots on the ground, the real people. You're not seeing the real people and the impact of things that are happening to them. So please reconsider that and even the revenue cap, and let's just do better. Thank you.
Ms. Brooks?
Good afternoon. Earl Campbell, Eastern Shore undercover, taxpayer of Wycomico County. First off, I've been, I watch every single council meeting since you guys have all been elected in the office. And I can tell you that watching you guys with the trash issue on both sides, from the county council to the county executive, was probably the most beneficial and most productive I've seen since I've been doing this, and I think many people here will agree. Some people in our community were affected by it. They reached out. They got, had their voice heard. You guys got together and worked, and what happened? These guys are happy, or at least in the right direction. So I commend you guys for that. We don't ever see that here. And that's everybody complaining about, is just having everybody work together. This is what can happen when that happens. So, second off, I just wanted to say, I commend Mr. Hastings for, for having a voice and having to speak in his own mind and not just being a follower, you know? You guys have a very tough job. I mean, I'll be the first one to say it. I'm very, and I come down on everybody because the people, you know, they don't want to see this nonsense, and they want to see everybody speaking for themselves. So I commend Mr. Holloway. Thank you for what you did. Last thing, I'm just, I, really, I had nothing to say today. I come here for Mr. Baker, because in an email conversation, he said he wanted me to hear for a complaint about FOIA. So I give you your opportunity to say whatever you want, sir.
Well, Mr. Campbell, it's not a, it's not a back and forth during public comments. We just allow the public to state their concerns.
Okay. I just, he asked me to make sure I was here, so that's why I was-
I understand.
Make sure I'm here. And I have one more thing I got to admit in '29. You know, everybody's wanting to get rid of the council executive or the county executive. I just find it really hard to believe that there's, there's multiple people up there on that council that actually wanted that position. They didn't get the position, and now they want to get rid of it. This doesn't look good. It's, it's a really bad look on you guys. So, that's all I have.
Well, per point of clarification, I don't think there was anyone up here that was looking for the appointment to that job or to run for that job.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying, it's just a point, yeah, I get you. I'm just giving you a point of clarification there.
Okay, I can refer you to many different articles that were out, interviews that were done. Mr. Holloway certainly wanted the position.
He entertained it.
No, 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 no. Stand up there and lie. I volunteered if they couldn't find anybody. Don't stand up there and say I wanted that position. You got the floor, okay?
The interview?
Yeah, I know what I said. I volunteered for the position.
I know what you said.
If nobody else would get it. I said I would take that position. So don't stand up there and say I wanted it. I didn't look for it, okay?
So with all due respect, sir, it was okay then, but not now? The position was okay then? And Mr. Cannon, I beg to differ, sir. You know, in the interview with Mr. Bassett, you sat there and said, "I'm going to consider it." That was out of your word. That's what you said, not me. That's you said that.
We'll finish this up, Mr. Campbell. If I, if I wanted the position, I would have run for it. Thank you.
Well, good morning. My name's Latisha Schofield. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. Today, I'm here to just express my concern for public safety for myself and my neighbors. It's a problem when I can't pull into the driveway of my own home because cars are speeding behind me. I have to miss the turn and come back around. And also, having older neighbors and also having a child that's special needs.
What was your name?
Latisha Schofield.
Okay.
So it's on Camden Avenue on Pine Bluff. I can't tell you how many times it's police officers out there, the firefighters. I know everyone is tired. They're tired of just having people recklessly driving, just speeding. I can't even go check the mailbox without, you know, jumping back from someone almost hitting me. I've been there for a year now, well, actually about 14 months, and the accidents and everything that's happening is a significant increase, and it's an issue for me. So I just wanted to bring some light, and then hopefully that within a couple of months or some kind of timeframe, we can come up with a solution. Because it's, it's going to take for someone to actually, unfortunately, lose their life, it seems like, before people actually, okay, let me slow down, let me stop speeding. Or let me just be aware of the driving with kids in the neighborhood. You don't see any kids out there. You can't. And it's an issue, and then it comes into the fact of, okay, do we sell our homes? Do we do this? But then property value. So then you're dealing with that, and then you're dealing with, okay, then also, you're dealing with the increase and stuff like that that you need for the firefighters, for the police department. So it's a big issue, and I just wanted to make sure that is addressed to the light. And that way, hopefully in the next couple of meetings or something, we can come up with a solution.
Thank you, Ms. Schofield.
Thank you.
Hold on, Mr. Taylor, I'm going to beat you up there real quick. I promise I won't be as long as you. All right. So it was a big day for all of us. I just wanted to comment on just a couple of things that were said in here. I feel that the council and maybe the executive form of government hasn't worked because the council keeps trying to change the recipe of what was originally intended in 2006. And Mr. Hastings, with all due respect, our forefathers did not set forth qualifications for people to run for elected positions, okay? In our constitution, it's common folk that run this, and we can't sit there and say for the executive, you have to have specific qualifications, because you would need those qualifications on council. I have a bachelor's degree in public relations and marketing. I have a master's degree in administration with 30 credits after that. I've worked for the Maryland State Department of Education as a master teacher. Okay? So when we're talking about qualifications, I think I hit those qualifications. Okay? Before I was elected, I had a transition team. Mr. Cannon, you were part of that transition team. You were asked specifically by Bunky Lufman to help me on that transition team. I was given 20 minutes by the previous county executive in a meeting. He said, "Here's the keys. You'll figure it out." That was my transition. There was an issue that we all had before we were elected. Cigar's house burned down. Do you remember that, Joe? I called you about it.
But no.
Cigar's house, when it burned down. Cigar's family was asking if we would waive the tipping fees.
Yes.
I called Shane. I called Jeff. I called, yes, you, James, sorry. And I called Joe, and I got your advice, and I took your advice. But it wasn't put on the council agenda because the council president didn't even want to offer that. But I wanted to say, there was a problem that I had, and I called you all, and we worked through it. Unfortunately, it didn't make it to the agenda. Three weeks into office, I was trying to get my team together. I didn't know what I was doing. Mr. Cannon, on my transition team, you already saw the example that I set. I called you. I sat with HR and finance, trying to figure things out. A meeting was called by President Cannon. Silly for us that we thought it was actually to talk about the council agenda. Nope, you scheduled a meeting to deliver a letter to me, calling me a potential criminal who may have misappropriated funds three weeks into office. Of course, it was proven wrong, and our county attorney said no. But that's how our professional relationship started. And I appreciate Mr. Baker, and I appreciate Mr. Wynn, because you actually called and apologized and said we probably shouldn't have had a closed-door meeting to discuss that, where conveniently, the meeting wasn't recorded. I'm disappointed in five of you. Not surprised, neither's hardly anybody in this room, but disappointed. You continually make decisions to undermine my office and hurt the morale of the employees and stop the progress of our county. I'm letting you know for the next five months, we're going to be doing everything to ensure that this ballot initiative fails because we cannot go backwards. And Mr. Holloway, you inspired me. I made my own list. These are all of the inappropriate actions taken by the council. Continuous leaks from council closed sessions. You allow citizens to use derogatory remarks, personal attacks, the repeated commentary. I'm the county executive. You can give me one extra minute.
Ms. Giordano, you are no different than any of the citizens in this podium.
I'm just going to leave these up here.
Thank you.
It has not only the inappropriate actions, it also has charter violations continually made, inappropriate overreaching legislation-
If you could, thank you.
And the 11 ballot initiatives to disrupt the balance of power. You all are welcome to look at them. These are all the way back from Bob-
Mr. Taylor, are you speaking next, please?
Yes. Mr. Taylor, you're up. Okay. Thank you all. Believe me, we're going to fight this. We're going to be all right.
Robert Taylor, county resident. Believe it or not, I agree with her on one thing, and that was the suggestion made by Lee, Mr. Hastings, that there could be criteria or conditions put on elected officials, particularly, I think we were speaking of the county executive. I'm not sure that would be unconstitutional. I have a concern about that. But I believe that, I've never seen it done, the idea is that any citizen should be able to run and hold an elected office. I think the only exception to the rule about residency and age is I think the president has to be a natural-born citizen. So I think that's the only other exception to that. There may be some. I've not looked at 3,000 counties and 150,000 cities. Somewhere, you might find something, but it's pretty unusual. In any event, I think we've seen today with the tipping fee situation, why we really need to shift back to the council manager form of government. First, she comes in and asks you to approve $100 per ton. We need that money. Then the fit hits the shan from these folks and others, many residents, and now, well, we can get by with 78. Well, I mean, how did it change all of a sudden? Did Bunky Lufman make a math error? I mean, come on. And now, the gentleman who is sitting here at the table, seat closest to me, says we need 84 a ton to break even. So they're all over the place. Now, I feel that probably we should break even. We should not have to take out of the reserve fund for the landfill to make operating expenses. So probably, it should be $84 a ton. It's going to go up. You could hear what they said. And I think we'd be better to do that. Now, I'm going to hopscotch a little bit with the minute left. I've already mentioned about putting conditions on county officials, elected officials. Mr. Wynn brought up about term limits. Congress doesn't have term limits. The General Assembly doesn't have term limits. Why would we need term limits? We have elections. The last election, we have four new members of the council. They weren't here a year or so ago. We've got plenty of turnover. We don't need term limits. That's number one. And you also suggested we could have a fund, a sinking fund, if you will, for public schools. Yes, we could do that. It would take money out of our budget that we use for other things, but under state law, you're going to go above your tax cap for education. I don't know, maybe the fellow from the superintendent here knows the answer. Maybe you could do that for a sinking fund. But you, to do, if you could, you'd have to increase the taxes to do it. So that's what you'd have to do. But yes, in theory, it can be done. Thank you. I think I beat her.
Any other public comments?
Mikael Dahlien, Wycomico County. I didn't prepare any statements today, as this has gone on months and months and months. It's, it's wearing me down. I think it's wearing everybody in the county down. When I, when I got into this with, kind of, Save Connolly Mill Park, with, you know, objections to Safari at the quarry, you know, it was with a pure heart, with a desire for Connolly Mill to serve the purpose that had been discussed for eight years, for it to be for the people of Wycomico, for it to be for the, you know, the kids to have access to green space. The parks that we're looking at are far out. They're not accessible. They're not close. While I do truly believe that, you know, county executives got a decent idea about having motorsports, I believe it should be in the appropriate place and not usurping eight years of work. Probably what scares me the most about this entire situation is I feel like, like the wool's been ripped off my eyes. I feel like, you know, I was going along thinking, you know, everybody's got the best interest of everybody else at heart. We're all here to help each other. We're all here in this boat together. As it's gone on, I feel like there's been so much misinformation. I feel like our stance has been twisted. I feel like our words have been twisted. I feel like our issues have been just swept under a completely different narrative, and our voices are lost. I'm worried about where else this might be happening, places that I don't know about, people that have other issues, whose voices are not truly being heard, because I know that mine are not. I know that those of my community in my neighborhood are not. Once again, like everybody else, I saw today, I thought, Mr. Dooley, you did an amazing job up here, the council, the executive, everybody worked together beautifully. That's really how it should be. It's what I wanted from the beginning. It's what I still want for Connolly Mill Park. I still want us all to work together. But I think we can't sweep under the rug the eight years of work. We can't sweep under the rug the eight years of council minutes, open work sessions. And we have to look at the history holistically, without spin, without rhetoric. We have to look at it together. We need to be at the same table. I ask that, you know, we just choose kindness. Ms. Shani Shields, you talk about respect. That's what we need. We need that, you know? And we also need to take a look at the best benefit for all, the highest and best use. Let's find a place for the motorsports, but this piece of land is special, and it belongs to everybody. Let's work together to get the best for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hi, good morning. Micah Stauffer, superintendent of schools, also resident of Wycomico County. I just want to take this opportunity on behalf of the school system as well as the Board of Education to thank the county council for the FY25 budget, particularly the allocation to the school system. And regarding three areas, the $1 million over maintenance of effort will go a long way. We appreciate that very much. That's going to enable us to get additional positions, reoccurring positions in our school system that will address the needs that we see particularly in the high class sizes in our elementary schools, the number of multilingual learners that has expanded dramatically over the course of these last few years to get support, teachers to help them, as well as go towards school climate, particularly in our middle schools. Additionally, the million dollars in one-time funding will go a long way towards completing the Glen Avenue project, where we have a wing on the back of the school that is not enclosed. It was open classrooms up until this time. We'll be able to enclose them, install a sprinkler system, provide doors onto those classrooms to be able to provide the learning environment that our students need and deserve. And then lastly, just want to thank the council for the money that will go towards Fruitland Primary. Yes, we will be bringing, every time a project closes, such as Mardele, as that's nearing to an end in the next year, we'll be bringing another project forward. We have 29 schools and facilities that we are always having to bring in front of the council, because as we bring those to you every three to four years, as one project closes and one project starts, you can do the math, that will be 75 to 100 years between projects. So that's our responsibility to bring that towards the council, and we appreciate the council for providing the funding that will initiate that Fruitland Primary project as we look towards starting construction on that as soon as we finish the construction on Mardele. So on behalf of the school system and the Board of Education, Gene Malone was not able to be here. He would be up here thanking you as well due to work obligations, but thank you all very much for the FY25 budget and also the allocation towards the school system. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stauffer.
Jim Hackens, Wycomico County. Didn't want to disappoint the council two meetings in a row, so here I am. Planned on talking about two things today, the library and solar farms in the county. But after watching, talking about the tipping fees, I, like others, was impressed how quickly this became an urgent issue, was a just, and everybody seemed to be working together to take care of these businesses in the county and citizens' complaints. But unfortunately, I guess about 20 to 25 minutes after all this cooperation and kumbaya But unfortunately, I guess about 20 to 25 minutes after all this cooperation and kumbaya and let's make it good, that all went out the window. So I'm gonna talk about a couple of things that I hadn't planned on talking about, that the council has done for the county that wasn't supposed to happen. Number one is the funding for the Fruitland Primary School. Wasn't planned until '27. The Board of Education was looking for it. The council felt it was necessary to be done, so the council decided we were gonna fund it in '25, the first 20.5 million of it. Then low and behold, the finance officer and the lawyer, oh no, you can't do that. That's not in the budget. Well, yeah, you can do it, and you did it, because it's for the education of the children in the county. You did it. Then we got talking about the funding for the volunteer fire departments. The chiefs went to the county executive and requested $52,000 increase this year. They were told there was no money, no additional money. If you need more money, you better get out there and barbecue more chicken. Well, the crap hit the fan. So all of a sudden, county executive got 75,000 for each fire department. Where'd that come from, all of a sudden? Collective bargaining agreement. That's going on for two years, but still isn't settled. It's my understanding in the past that it's been a three-year agreement, which seems kinda short to me in a business world to have a three-year agreement. Most agreements are four, five, six years. But now, apparently, it's being changed to a two-year agreement, so that prior to, if the executive is kept before the next election, they're gonna negotiate it again. Why? It should be negotiated once per executive term if you have an executive. I'm sorry, I'm out of time. I'll finish two weeks now.
Any other public comments?
Hi, my name's James Darlene. I live in Wycomico County. I don't have any prepared statements, but I'd like to just revoice what my wife here said, Mikel. You know, if you could just hear that 1,000, a million times, I think that would be just great. You know, there was some talk with this tipping fee stuff that made me think, you know, transparency, it seemed like some people thought there was a lack of transparency or something. You know, it reminds me of Connolly Mill Park and Safari at the Quarry, just that lack of transparency. What else? Also, on that note, with the tipping fees in the trash, I'd say everyone to stop littering and try to participate in your community litter cleanup groups or what have you. Go out there by yourself. Let's clean up Wycomico. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seen on council comments, Shane?
So I was bashed a while back for saying this, but I'm gonna say it again. The county executive just stood up there and said that I called her and apologized to her for a closed-door meeting in reference to the letter that we had sent her, the one she referred to. Part of that was true. I did call her, and I did apologize to her. I told her the tone could have been different, and I reminded her that I was a brand-new councilman. I don't recall any closed-door meeting. I apologized for the tone of the letter, and the tone of the letter could have been toned down. Once again, I'm gonna point out, now, a few weeks ago, I had said the county executive never stays in here and listens to the public, never listens to the council, and people said she doesn't stay in here because there was no seating. As you all can see, there's seating in this room. It's become a routine that she will blow in here, make her comment, and blow out. Now, whether you're in this room and you're for the executive or against the executive form of government, it's my personal belief that when you are sitting in the chairs that we are in and she is in, this is where the public comes to speak. Some days it's hard on me, and some days it's hard on everybody sitting up here. It's hard on her too, I'm sure. But I do think she should listen to the goods and the bads that are said from that podium. And you guys welcome to grab these papers she left up here. I don't know what it is, but that's all I have to say.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I got some. Yeah. In regards to the comments the gentleman made, I apologize for the outburst. I don't like being accused of something that's not correct. The history of that is, Mr. Culver passed away. The council had to appoint someone to be county executive, acting county executive. We were in a stalemate. So, you know, a lot of conversations going back and forth, what are we gonna do? Council couldn't agree. So I told, I think it was Mr. Cannon, I said, you know, I'll do it for the remainder of the term. It's not something I was gonna rejoice in. I don't like sitting in an office that much. I think I could have done it. And I think I had support, according to what John said. I think I had the four votes to do it. But I didn't run for it. I did not run for county executive. So while all of this was going on, there's this gentleman that pops up every now and then, I think he's sitting on the back row back there now, Mr. Taylor, looks up this obscure law in Maryland that says you can't be on the county council and then get appointed as a county executive. I don't know where the law came from, but it was there. So anyway, that was the end of that story, but I did not run for county executive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Josh?
Oh, yeah. Well, I'd say, you know, I've been working in and around local and state government for the past almost 20 years now. I've met certainly enough people who firmly believe that, you know, a good piece of legislation can cure the common cold. I don't particularly believe in a lot of heavy government, but I do believe in process. You can't legislate kindness. That's not gonna, that's not gonna happen. But we can put parameters around for success. I do think, you know, it was also mentioned term limits. Well, no, there's not a lot of term limits for legislative branch, but there is for the executive branch. Currently, we do not have term limits on our executive branch. That's something that I think could be considered. Last things I'll say, of course, I did want to mention also, Ms. Schofield had mentioned the Pine Bluff and Camden Avenue, really important issue there. A lot of accidents have been happening. That's a confluence of multiple reasons why, including coming from one municipality aside from the Fruitland into the county, into then the city with the university and other area around there. I did want to say, in positive news, we did lower the speed limit recently, and then we had a traffic study going on to continue to further fix that, because that is a major issue, and I'm glad you brought it up. We need to make sure that we fix that, because it is, I literally pulled over, not to, pulled over, and there was also a turtle crossing the road, and I knew how fast people would go around, and so as I went, I stopped my car and I pulled to go grab the turtle, and I saw the car going around that, you know, must've gone close to 60 miles an hour, squashed the poor turtle and went everywhere. I don't want that to happen to children, and it's something you gotta, you gotta curve that comes around. So we desperately need to continue to make sure that we're being thoughtful, especially on those areas of the county where it goes from municipal bounds to county bounds. And we don't have sidewalks. That was poor planning many years ago. We didn't put that in, even though that looks like it's in the city, it is not in the city. A lot of that's county. That was a mistake, and that mistake has now cost us. Last things I'll say, I think, I'll say it again, Wycomico County should be a zero-tolerance county for trash. I think we should have the highest amount of rules and regulations that we can to make sure that this county is clean, and we've got a lot of great folks who have been working at that for a while. I think I want to continue to build on that and be thoughtful in just signage, and then also in the teams of folks who are actually working at that, but also in penalties and fines, and then also working with the, you know, the folks that, the trash, you know, folks who are helping collect all that. It's something that we all need to collectively address. So once again, I'd like to see Wycomico County move in the direction of being a zero-tolerance county for trash. Thank you.
Jeff?
So I do want to thank everybody for coming out today. Always like to hear what people have to say. Since we did adopt the FY25 budget, we still have a couple of issues that we're working on, the collective bargaining agreement, I think that was just referenced, and the fire service agreement with the City of Salisbury. And I'm fairly certain that through productive discussion with all the stakeholders, we will get where we need to be in a financially responsible manner. I think it was previously said on the podium that there's a significant amount of misinformation out there, and I think I could sit up here for the next several hours and address things one right after the other, but I got a couple here. One of the things that's been said was the council passed the largest budget in the history of Wycomico County, and that's 100% correct. But if we rewind a year, we can make the same statement. And I went back five years, and we can make the same statement. It's called inflation. And next year, I'm gonna make a prediction that we're gonna say the same thing again. There were some comments about cutting funding to public safety. Again, that's just not true. When the budget was presented to the council on April 16th, the county fire departments were flat-funded from FY24. Through discussion with the fire chiefs and the Volunteer Firefighters Association, the council was able to put $825,000 in the budget to fund the county fire department. That's $75,000 per department. The council increased the funding for the City of Salisbury Fire Department by 60%. Now, it wasn't the 100% that was requested, but let's rewind a year. When we were having the same discussion, and the City of Salisbury was requesting $1.9 million, and the executive said, we can only give you a million, and the council approved it, and that's what they got. So in the interest of working together, we saw today how it can happen, but it requires discussion with everybody. In the instance of the tipping fees, that includes the commercial permit holders. The City of Salisbury, I just found out, when all this exploded on Friday afternoon at 5:00, I guess that's when it got posted. Over the weekend, I did a bunch of research about this. I find out that the City of Salisbury paid the county over $600,000 in tipping fees in last year. So if we were to increase those tipping fees, what would that do? That would be $900,000. They'd have to raise the prices to all the city residents. Again, it's that domino effect. You know, what we do here is gonna affect over there, and we all have to pay attention to that. That's really all I got, other than, we saw today the value of productive discussion. And thank you guys for reaching out and sharing your concern. We don't want to do anything that harms business. Trust me. Business is hard enough right now. I know that. But I hope this clears up a few things, and I would encourage anybody that has any questions. Every council member has at least one phone. Some have two. Every council member, yes, some might have three. Every council member has an email. We have an office phone. I was on Facebook Messenger last night at 10:30 talking about tipping fees. It's very easy to get ahold of us and get the facts. So please reach out. That's all I got.
Again, thank you and for coming. I always forget to thank people for coming. I like to see people see it in person, the flesh and blood, not on TV. First, I want to say that one of my friends in the political arena passed away. He was funeralized yesterday, Gary Comages. And he became a dear friend of mine when I first got elected on the city council. He was a smart man. He gave me good advice, because I'd pick up the phone and call him when I was reading these briefing books to see if I was mentally comprehending what he was saying. So I just want to commend him for the service. He worked with the fire department, not only the volunteer fire department, he worked for the state highway department. And I just want to, I don't go to funerals, but he was just a great man. Now, back to, the word kindness means a lot to me. Treating people with kindness, it seems like today is hard to do. And I think if we treat people with kindness and have humility, accept criticism, working together, those things mean a lot to people. And I think that we forget that. We're here to represent the county. We're here to work with each other. We're here to work with the executive if we're allowed to. But you cannot be defensive and sensitive to everything if you want to do this job, because you have to know how to accept criticism. You have to know that if your vote don't pass, you move on and find a way to compromise, because you're gonna have one day an issue, like the tipping fees today, that we all have to work together to solve. We can't, I spoke to the executive yesterday, and I told her she needs to stay off of social media. Social media should, I told her, that's what I told her, because misinformation is put out in social media. I know when you go to the court, you can't say, what is it, second, hearsay information, that's what I'm trying to say. You can't use hearsay information in court of law. It's gotta be factual. In order to get facts, you have to research. You have to read, ask questions before you make a decision. Because sometime, you can't believe everything you hear. And I always tell people, and I think I told James this when I took him on a tour, take what I say with a grain of salt, and watch, and my grandmother said, watch and pray. Watch things and learn things. Don't take my, don't take what I say today. Just learn and don't gossip and try to get people angry, fear tactics, all that stuff to get your way is not the way our government should be. Truth will set you free. Tell the truth, and it will set you free. The young lady that has the traffic problem on Camden Avenue, I just went to Mardele, and gentleman had the curve, and I found out that you call the roads department, and you have to go through the county executive, and you can explain what your situation is, and they'll give you speed limit, I guess a speed limit, but explain, or you could put child signs up there, child at play or something like that. So I would start there. And I'm available to anyone, even the ones that disagree with me. I can sit down and talk to them. I can talk to the President of the United States. So that's the type of person that I love to talk. But again, thank you for coming, and I enjoy what I do.
Shane, any other comments?
James? Sure. Yeah. Well, I have a scripture that has been speaking to me for the past couple of weeks. It's Second Chronicles 7:14. "If my people who are called by my name hubble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven and will forgive their sin and heal their land." Now, that message speaks to me, because that doesn't apply to one person, that applies to everyone. And I think that should be something that everybody should read on their own time and have that discussion with yourself. But I- But I think that, that message I've seen four or five times this past week, and it just, I just had to read it. We, Latasha, or Letitia, yes, Ms. Schofield. I don't know, when I go into Delaware, I see the, not speed cameras, because I don't like speed cameras, but they have speed readers. When you're going above the speed limit, it shoots the number out at you, and you actually slow down. At least I slow down. I don't know, Mr. Cannon, is that something that we could maybe work on, or something with the sheriff department?
Sure. Yeah. Sheriff's office did put one there. They're going to, they're going to come back and do it again.
Okay. I'm just thinking, you know, because they have like the stakes, they stake in the ground, and it stays there. It's not something that we can put, move like a wagon or anything. So, I don't know. There are some places throughout the county that I definitely think we should absolutely do something with. I don't know about adding a speed camera, because speed cameras are just another tax in my mind, but like, we got to start with something, and I think the, the speed readers would be nice. So, I think that's all I'm going to say, but thanks, guys.
From presidential comments, I, I think I reluctantly have to respond to a comment that was made earlier, the executive had made the claim that I had called her a criminal when we'd only been in office for about, about a month or so. It's a bit of an exaggeration, if not actually a really false statement. But to give you some context, this background is context, so you recognize what the circumstances were here. I'd say within the first month of getting in office, we were all new, and the executive hired two members from her campaign to work in her office. Not a crime. The only problem is that the two positions were, two positions were not recognized in the position control document of Waukesha County. In other words, those jobs didn't exist in Waukesha County and were not funded in Waukesha County. Still, they were arbitrarily added to her staff. One was called a legislative assistant, the other one was called a public information officer. So you had two people who were being hired with taxpayer funding in two positions unilaterally created by the executive. Making matters worse in that regard is that the executive chose to pay these two individuals not from the, not from the county executive's budget. One was paid from the roads department, from the public works, and the other one was getting paid with a check through the finance department, not through the county executive's office. So, you had a situation where you had two unauthorized individuals working in a non-existent position and being paid with money from two other county departments, rather than through the executive's approved budget. So, you don't need a master's degree to know that that's not right. And it is, it is, as was claimed, a misappropriation of funds. And that's what it is. It's just a misappropriation of funds. And that's the initiative, that's the initiative that I took on behalf of the county council. And that was the purpose of the letter that went out. It's the council's responsibility, as a matter of checks and balances, to notify the executive and ask the executive to immediately rectify the situation. And that was the purpose of the letter. It wasn't to call, call her a criminal in any sense of means. It was to say, "What you have done is a misappropriation of funds, and it needs to be, you need to remedy this as soon as possible." So that's where it was, as clarification. And I, I would rest on that, because I've heard before someone making a comment that I had called her a criminal or something like that. I don't even often use that vernacular, but that's a clarification, okay? So that maybe the public realizes what the full story is on that. With that being said, I need to adjourn from legislative session to go into an open work session, followed by a closed work session pursuant to the general provisions article section 3, 305b15, to discuss a cybersecurity audit to ensure the protection of the county's security measures pertaining to security assessments on deployments related to information technology, network security, information, the deployment or implementation of security personnel, critical infrastructure, or security devices. It's a motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you. All right. We're reconvening as Waukesha County Legislative Session 2024-13 for June 18th, 2024. The first item on the open work session is peer reviews for the internal auditor. Good to have you here. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Council President Cannon and council. So there's, there's two components for this peer review. The, the actual code itself only requires that the office get peer reviewed. However, in order to have a, a cost efficient peer review going through ALGA, I also have to do peer reviews of other organizations. I put in the packet for you today, the questionnaire, it's only a draft, I have not submitted anything of, of what I was planning on submitting. At, at one point, you'll notice there's some questions about, "Have you completed the required number of peer reviews for similar," like, "Have you done enough similar reviews?" And so currently it says, "No, I, I did the training, I intend to participate." So, before I can actually participate, I have to have discussed with you and, and seek your approval, and obtained your approval to, to do peer reviews elsewhere. So, it would be, you would be paying for my time as an employee, but I wouldn't be here. For, for some of them, I would be here, like, looking at the documents of other internal audit offices, and for, for about a week's of work, and then about a week of actually going to others. So there's three that I was thinking, I, I think I only have to do two, but there's three on my radar. I don't know if the Prince William County, Prince William County Public Schools has actually had the review yet, if they're still looking for people. That one's been on there for a while. It's sort of in the middle of, I don't know, it's not near a beach. I'll put it that way. So, anyway, so that one's a Virginia one. It would be pretty easy for me to go to. There's also Anna Rundle County Public Schools, they want one in 2025 in January, and then one in Florida. You would not be paying for my transportation there, you would not be paying for my hotels or food or any of that. It would all be through ALGA. I don't know if they pay it upfront, or they somehow give me an advance. I'm, I'm not quite sure the details, but, but they did say that, just like we would be paying for the peer reviewing people that come here, those other entities would be paying for all of my costs to go there. The only thing you would be paying for is my time as, as a Waukesha County employee volunteering to do this elsewhere. So, if it's okay with you, I would like to try to get onto these three. I would only take two, whichever two are available of these three.
It's just for clarity, so you're, I guess you're, like, what's the, the 15-second version of what you hoped the, the best thing to come, outcome out of this would be?
That, that we would be qualified to have peer review from ALGA, where it's only the cost of transportation and housing of those other people. Otherwise, it would be like, you know, $20,000 for peer review. They, they estimate it would be about $5,000 to have our office peer reviewed, rather than the $20,000, if, if like, you know, labor was involved. So, so that's the, the number one outcome of doing these peer reviews. The second one is that I would learn how other offices do things. There has been contention between the executive and the council that's been going on for decades. Part of me going there hopefully might be to see, how do people, if they do have that contention, how do they deal with it? How do they resolve it? If they don't have it, and they just have the council form of government, even still, it would be important for me to understand how I can still be independent under a one body government. So, so either way, I think understanding how other internal auditors do things will be important for, for my office, just, just from like that, that perspective. And then the other is, if, if like, I have all the checks and balances, I've been going through, and we'll talk about one other potential deficiency in a moment, but there's, like, I'm going to have to do, I've already started drafting checklists and so forth, but having done these peer reviews elsewhere, I'll, I'll see how I can improve my checklist, how I can improve the Waukesha County test sheets. Currently, there's not really a, a standard format. There, there wasn't in the old manual, which was very outdated. I don't think necessarily some prior auditors, internal auditors here were, were doing those things and trying to create those methods. And if the, doing these peer reviews with others would also help make our methods here better. Does that make sense?
So you're saying that you're physically going somewhere to, clarify that, I missed that, you're going?
So, for instance, for Prince William County, if, if you approve me to do this, there would be sometime in August likely, I would be receiving documents of, from the Prince William internal auditor, and I would be going through their audits, going through their support documents, their test sheets, all of that stuff, to make sure that they are compliant with the standards. In addition, I will then probably drive to Prince William County, stay in a hotel there for approximately four days, then going into their internal auditor's office, actually physically looking at files that couldn't be emailed to me, physically meeting with the internal auditor, physically looking at whatever it is, and, and then having, and prepared. So, so this is?
Are you doing, are you doing one peer review, or are you doing multiple peer reviews?
I think ALGA requires two.
Two. Okay. So you'd be doing two?
Two.
And how are you going to decide which, I mean, are these just examples, or are these actual choices that you're?
These are the current actual choices. I do not want to go to California.
Right.
I, most of these are California. So, there's three on here that I, I think would be reasonable. I definitely want to do Anna Rundle County, because that's Maryland. That's absolutely critical to me that, to do that. The Prince William County, I don't know if they're still looking, because that's been there for a while. It's sort of like an ad board from ALGA. So I, I don't know if they're filled yet. That would be my, my, my next choice, and if I can't get on that one, to do Florida.
So what's the time, what is, what's the time from, how much time?
80 hours.
80 hours.
It would be 80 hours, yes.
I don't think this is a bad idea, because you always have somebody you can call?
Yes.
And have a personal relationship to ask them how they do something. So, I mean, I think this is, this will be good, good training for you. Great.
Absolutely. And, and I think that there's over, when I get to the other deficiency, I'll talk about that in a minute, that some of, some people talk about the internal auditor being weaponized by council to the executive. I don't know if that's necessarily true, but I think having a peer review would dispel that. And then the other thing is, I, I think you had some, a, a long period of time where you didn't have an internal auditor after the, the former one left. And, you know, part of it might have been that there aren't enough internal or CPAs around here. The, the other part, though, is, and I remember being a little hesitant, but then I was like, "Okay, it's just going to be easy," because the, the reports weren't necessarily what I would have done in the past, that you don't have a peer review. If, if you look at other counties that are under these standards, they have it on their website, here's the peer review certificate that you passed. And, and if, knowing that, like, like, there's a very good chance, I think, that we're going to, you know, fail or pass with deficiencies. And if, if we fail, I, my CPA license, I would actually, I think, have to tell, I, I need to double check this, but I would have to tell the, the licensing board that I work in an organization that failed, and, and I was the auditor at the time of the failure. And I think a lot of people don't want that, right? So, so this goes to, having a passing peer review, I think, will help the county in a lot of ways, not just the improving of my office, or of the internal auditor's office, but of what the public thinks of the internal audit function in Waukesha County.
Are you suggesting one peer review or two?
There's only going to be one peer review, only one peer, peer review every five years. That's what the code requires.
Okay.
Or the standards, I'm sorry.
Are you okay with this?
I thought it was one in Buffalo in January. You're not going to go.
I'm fine with it. If we say we're okay with that, I guess?
Yes.
It really does depend on where you're going to go. And you say you're planning to go to Anna Rundle, did you say?
That, that's going to be absolutely, the, the first thing I'm going to do is, is apply for Anna Rundle, and then I would want to apply for the next available between Virginia and Florida.
Okay.
So your sources be like Hawaii, Florida, and?
Angor Maine.
We are, there's, there's two things. One is, is the time involved. If, normally, I could do one, like, so, so I'm supposed to do maybe two before they come out. That's like the goal. And these are a five-year audit, right? So I could have done like one one year, one another year, but since I'm going to do two in one year, I want to have as minimal time traveling, like, I, I feel very under the gun about getting this done, and, and going to Hawaii would take a lot of time, I think, so.
Also, I, I would want you to do Anna Rundle.
Yeah.
I think it's more relevant, and I'm understanding it's more relevant. I even think going to Florida may not be as relevant in, in cross-referencing information as Anna Rundle would be.
It, it is, because it's the, the type of standard. So, so for instance, Hawaii, even if I wanted to go to Hawaii, Hawaii would not, there probably isn't.
Let's not talk about Hawaii, because the public's going to say we're talking about something. I was joking.
Okay. Okay. Let me, let me, let me give another count. So I'm actually, a lot of my changes have been sort of inspired by Howard County, and, and some, there's some other counties that I think look really good. Their, their internal audit pages look amazing. They are under a different standard. So they're under a more heightened standard, which it's a, I think it's a GAO standard. We are under the IIA standards, and so that's in the county code, where it says like the international professional.
I ask you this, if you choose to go to Anna Rundle, and you can't get a position in Anna Rundle this year, is that not something you could ask for next year, since it's?
It's every five years. It's every five years. So, so there's, their next one would be in five years from now.
Oh, it wouldn't be until five years from now?
Right. It's, so it's every five years. So we're only going to do peer review here every five years, Anna Rundle's only doing peer review every five years. I think we'll be able to get in. If I put in the application today, I have fair confidence that we'll get that.
Everybody's good?
Yeah.
Okay. We're good.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, I went through the checklist, there's a lot of checklists. I only went through two of them with a fine-tooth comb of what ALGA's expecting. Again, ALGA is the, the local government auditors association that's going to be, the, the peer review criteria is going to be their checklist. The one thing, there's a lot of things on the internal audit part that, that can be improved with checklist standard things I'm going to be doing. But, but the one thing that I, I think is going to need your input on more, and the, and possibly the executives, is your risk appetite and your risk tolerance. There's been discussion, I think, before that, you know, these things are for the internal, like, it's the internal auditor's professional judgment. The peer review, the, the audit committee for Waukesha County that, that steers me is very strongly in the favor of not having the internal auditor have an opinion. And, and I'm in agreement, I, I usually just test, and then what, what's the level of, when do we turn it into fail? And this past year, I used what I think the last internal auditor was doing, I think it was slightly subjective, but, but I still, generally, like a 20% was my fail rate. If it was, if, if the, if the failures were over 20%, then I would, you know, drop it down. If it's not, then, you know, I, I would still pass it. But that might not be what your risk tolerance is, as the board of the county. So, I'm going to email you all a little bit more about these phrases, "risk appetite" and "risk tolerance," and, and hopefully request that you, you come up with a statement, or, or we can just have discussions. So when I present the audit plan for next year, you tell me what your preferences are for failure rates, for your risk tolerance. It's not that, I would, I would actually do the failure rate thing, but, but what your risk tolerances are. For instance, if the purchase card expenditures, if, if 20% of them don't have signatures, is that the failure rate, or is it really only 10%? If the, if there's purchases that were never approved by a supervisor, you know, is that going to be failing when the volume is over 10% of, of what I tested, or 15%? Those are risk tolerances. Your risk appetite items are, you know, yes, we went over budget for something, but we went over budget because it was safety. So safety would have a higher priority over spending. Or what about the timing? So, we, we've heard, in, in my bank report, my bank reconciliation report, there was about how the, the amount of time it took for checks to clear. So that's a timing issue. And is timing more important than the, the amount of money that the county spends on having another employee in the finance department, right? That would be like a financial, like, is money more important than time? Is safety more important than money? And, and so those are items that are part of that risk appetite. And, and so when the internal auditor knows what the risk appetite is of the board, as well as those risk tolerances, then when I create these reports, it's based on what I think your, your risk preferences are. And I don't see that much recorded on that.
Actually, I don't want to, I see you're not going to speak for the council, but I do think that, you know, I'm going to look to your recommendations for what you think is best, and given what you've bounced off with your own committee. But I view us more as a sounding board and as a way to, to be decisive on anything that needs to extra attention. But otherwise, you know, I really trust your experience and understanding, and, and I want us as a county, depending upon, I mean, I don't really care, honestly, which certification or we are, I just want to be the best. I want to have rules and regulations and procedures in place. I want to have rules and regulations and procedures in place so that, God forbid, you get hit by a bus, or any of us are, you know? Like, we are in good shape, and then the next, the people who sit in these seats 200 years from now are following what you've put together.
Just to put a little bit in perspective for, for where some of my conundrums have been with like, am I passing these audits, or am I failing them, or, or the intermediate adequate? Is that I regularly see audits not have like, or, or the departments not have their goals, their, their requirements for things, like, that there, there must be signatures, or there must be, like, like, for instance, bank reconciliations, there's no actual, I don't think that there's like a criteria that says the reconciliation has to be done within 30 days, or it has to be within 60 days. There could be, as of today, but, but it was, there's regularly not controls here. There's not a centralized repository for controls, or at least I haven't been made aware of one. And so, if the board, you, the council, the, the standards refer to the board. And this is not something I want today, I'm, I'm just making you aware of it, that this is the, the one area that I think is lacking for the internal audit office, is, is having from management. So I could try to get it from the executive, but I have not seen it. There's not a current strategic plan for the county, and, and I've heard repeatedly throughout the year that it's being developed, it's being developed. And so there's the executive side, which maybe would be considered senior management, but then there's the board. And so the standards, for instance, have various references to getting, like, whether the organization has defined its risk appetite and implemented a risk management strategy and/or framework. So, I, I think this is something that can, can be continued throughout time, but, you know, risk tolerance, knowing this through discussions with the board and senior management. And so, I, I can try to reach out more with the executive, but, but I also want to have at least documented in the open meeting minutes that I had these discussions with you, because there's like another one reviewing the risk appetite statement, or documented communications with the board and senior management regarding their risk appetite and tolerance. So we do have to have it on the record that we've had these discussions somewhere, even if you don't give me that statement. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So, so that's the only major area, other than I have to update a bunch of checklists. Okay, so, so the only other question is, for, before I submit the request to ALGA for peer review, the timeframe, I, I put on this draft December, January. If we, if you want it to be January of next year, or a little bit farther out, if you have any preferences. The committee thinks January is reasonable.
Okay.
I, I mean, if the committee's thinking that, yeah, that sounds good.
If it's, it's the middle of legislative session, and state level, I don't think that impacts anything that you're doing, so, right?
I think my, my crazy time here, or my hectic time here is April. So, I don't want it during April.
Summer's good.
Summer's good after.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for the peer reviews.
Anybody else?
All right.
And the motion is adjourned to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.